Folks, thank you for attending the Tiburon Town Council meeting for May fifteenth. May we have the roll call and the call, I did the call to order you do the roll call.
Councilmember Nick Far is absent. Councilmember Ryan?
Here.
Councilmember Warner is absent. Vice Mayor Thier?
Here.
And Mayor Fredericks?
Here. Lee, will you give us the instructions for the Zoom attendees on how to participate?
If you're calling in on Zoom and would like to make a comment during this meeting, please use the raise hand feature of Zoom, which will indicate to me you would like to make a comment. You can find the raise hand button on your webinar controls bar on the bottom of your Zoom window or smartphone screen. If you're calling and using a phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. Thank you.
Thank you. Now's the time for a public comment on anything that is not already on the agenda. Is there any public comment from the room? I'm seeing none. Yes, ma'am. Yes, please.
Thank you. My name's Leslie Harlander and I'm one of the trustees for the Tampa Pius Union High School District. And I'm here tonight because district staff, as well as the trustees, are reaching out to the community, going to city council meetings and school boards throughout the district, and trying to start more of a two-way conversation in parallel with an actual poll be going out. If you may have gotten the poll by now. This has to do with the fact that you know that Measure A did not pass last March. And so wanted to clear up a few of the items that we want, we think are important, but also give you an update of where we are in that process. Most of the students that come to us from Tiburon do go to Redwood. I do want to start by saying that we never intended or planned to have a hundred million dollar cafeteria. And I hope that you understand that, that we would not have approved such a thing. But that is something that for that campus with students, like I say, from Tiburon that generally go mostly to Redwood, but sometimes TAM. That issue, you know, the cafeteria, really cafeteria slash multipurpose room. We asked the team to go back and sharpen their pencils and do more value engineering and look at repurposing and seeing where we could, perhaps bring the cost down. And they did come back with a proposal for the board to consider. And it did involve repurposing another room, group of rooms. We still need to have a multipurpose cafeteria because it is over eight hundred, roughly eight hundred students that we feed breakfast and lunch to. So that's, that's being looked at. At TAM High, there's not as much of a reduction because TAM High does have the greatest need because of state law, plus it's often just done anyway. When you go over fifty percent of replacement costs for construction, you're required to just go ahead and scrape it and start over. And TAM High has many buildings that where we, with, there's no ADA compliance right now. We really can't get students that are even in crutches to second floor classrooms. At that campus, the only area that they were able to see a reduction was with the auto shop, but looking at other ways to get around that. So those are some of the highlights. So I might be reaching out to you later if you have any community members you think that would be of interest. And really look forward to hearing more from the community through our polling and talking one-on-one and getting feedback of what you're most interested in seeing with the public schools. So thank you. Thank you for taking the time.
Thank you for the update. Is there any further public comment?
Could I just ask if you could give your information to our town clerk? So that members can contact you. So thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Is there any further comment from the public on items not on the agenda? I am seeing none. Anything online?
Seeing none.
We move on now to the consent calendar. Would anyone in the room like to take any item off the consent calendar? I'm seeing none. Anyone online?
Seeing none.
Would anyone on the council like to take anything off the consent calendar? I'm hearing none. Lee, let's note that councilmember Nick Farr is joining us. I'll entertain a motion now to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The consent calendar passes. We move now to action items. The first item on the list is considering granting a building permit extension for the work at eleven plus Mulan.
Madam Chair, I had a question. Would it be possible to take the Main Street closure first?
Yes.
There's a lot of people in the audience, I think, that want to speak.
Unless no one, unless someone on the council objects or someone on, in the audience objects, let us move to that particular item, which is action item four. Consider approval of Main Street road closure on Friday, June fourteenth for Friday nights on Main. And there is a staff report.
A very brief staff report. Madam Mayor, back in May of 2023, council voted unanimously to limit the number of lower Main Street closures to six events per calendar year and reserved three of those events for events sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce recently submitted an application for a Friday Nights on Main event scheduled for June fourteenth, 2024, which would take place from about 2:30 to 10:00 PM. And staff understands that this date was specifically chosen to coincide with the graduation of the Delmar Middle School. We're bringing this to council only because that weekend, we also have two other road closures in downtown. And I just wanted to make sure council was aware of it and was comfortable with it. On June fifteenth is the Juneteenth celebration where Lower Main Street will also be closed in the afternoon. And on June fifteenth in the morning is the annual car show where Paradise Drive, between the Rotary at the Waterfront and Mar West, will be closed for most of the morning and a couple hours in the afternoon. So just to summarize, Paradise Drive will be closed, excuse me, if council approves the road closure on Friday, June fourteenth, Lower Main Street will be closed Friday afternoon. It would be reopened for a short period of time on Saturday morning to allow delivery trucks and other vehicles to pass. It would then be closed again in the early afternoon for the Juneteenth celebration. And Paradise Drive would be closed Saturday morning until the early afternoon. I do know there's representatives of the Chamber of Commerce here and we're also here to answer any questions.
So I actually have a question. Are the three events working together to sort of coordinate an efficient presentation of these road closures and the benefits of the events?
I can't speak for all three events. I do understand that the Chamber of Commerce representatives have been in contact and are in, are in contact with the folks who are organizing the Juneteenth celebration. And both parties are aware of both events. And my understanding is there's no concern there amongst the, the event planners. Again, the representative of the chamber may be better positioned to answer that question.
Are there council questions?
Could we hear from the chamber representative?
And we will when we finish our council questions. Are there any more?
I'll have questions probably before, you know, after, after we hear. Yeah.
Sure. So this is the time now for public comment. Would someone in the room like to make comments on this decision?
All right. Hello, everybody. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Melanie Haddad. I'm very nervous too, so I'm going to use my notes if I may. I'm Melanie Haddad, the Executive Director of the Tiburon Peninsula Chamber of Commerce. And I am here asking you to support our closing Main Street on June fourteenth for Friday Night on Main. As you know, Friday Night on Main is an event that's, our community looks forward to. It's time for everyone to come together and celebrate and relax. The June fourteen date was chosen specifically this year to coincide with the Delmar graduation. As a way to kind of kick off our summer for our families and our community and our businesses. Friday Night on Main will provide a safe and inclusive celebration for students and their families. And the Delmar community is really looking forward to it. As are we. We understand it's the same weekend as other events. We've looked into changing the date. It's just not practical. We've already got rentals. We've got entertainment booked, which would be almost impossible to change. Plus, we just don't want to disappoint the Delmar families. We have been working to Greg's point. We've been working very closely with the Juneteenth Celebration Committee. We're working together to ensure both events run smoothly. And actually, the collaboration is a good thing because we're able to share rentals and other resources. And hopefully will enhance both events. So please, I would ask you to support our Friday Night on Main event. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? No, thank you for the presentation. And I especially know the efficiencies that the chamber has brought about by having the events work together and their cooperation is appreciated.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Any further public comment?
Hi, everyone. So good to see familiar faces. I'm Connie Pivamatics. I'm a representative of the Delmar PTA. I happen to be the Delmar PTA Site Chair. This morning, we had a district-wide PTA meeting and we had representatives from the Reed Schools Foundation, Dr. McGrath, our superintendent, as well as Liz Webb, our representative from the school board. And they asked unanimously to have somebody come and speak to you this evening and tell you how this Friday Nights on Main is so important. It's an opportunity to have not just Delmar students and the graduates and the families, but the entire school district, which represents seven hundred families, about a thousand students. So many new families in the community, very excited for this opportunity. One of the drawbacks that we're concerned is if that you were considering moving the date is that summer begins and so many families and kids, you know, leave the area for camps and for other things. So I would ask you to please consider, I think, closing the road, you know, might seem like an obstacle, but I think we can get over it. We've had these many, many times in the past. And I think that the community coming together, supporting the businesses downtown is really, really key. And also the opportunity for families to hear and participate in Juneteenth and the car show. So it would really make a difference to everyone, not just the Delmar families. And with that, I also want to offer up, we've got a lot of volunteers that would be more than help, happy to help strategize on whatever needs to be done to remove obstacles or to collaborate with Chamber and Melanie. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a question. I, I understand the problem, I think, for us is the extended road closures over all those days and all those hours. And I understand there was a conversation, just to be considerate, about the possibility of moving it to Zelinski Park. Why don't you just talk a little about how that conversation went?
I am not familiar with that conversation. What I can tell you is that the conversation with the former, prior to Melanie, with Deanna Biss started back in January, or actually last year. Deanna reached out to us and we told her we would be in contact early in the school year, this year. So we had worked with her in collaborating in terms of the date. So the date had already been established just because of the school calendar. But I'm not familiar with moving it or what the conversations took place about.
That was a question about the place, and I hope in the future you would consider it. And I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I just wanted to demonstrate that, that this has been thoughtfully planned. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's okay.
Holly, did you want to make a comment?
No.
No, I think we have more public comment and then I'll make my comments.
All right.
If there's more people.
I just felt you looking at me, so I thought.
No, it's okay.
I was just looking at you. Thank you very much. Is there further public comment?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Brittany Hannan. I am coming to you as a Corinthian Island homeowner, as well as a Upper Ark Road business owner. And in case there are any concerns about maybe people that have regular access to the roads or perhaps can hear the music, I wanted to say at least from my perspective, bring it on. We love it. I don't see any issue with having all three events on the same weekend. In fact, I think it's really a positive to have all three events on one weekend. Everyone can mark that on their calendars as perhaps maybe that's not the weekend to go away, but rather to invest their dollars here in Tiburon. So just wanted to say fully support the initiative and would appreciate your approval of that date. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Thank you. Any further comment? I am seeing none. I will bring it back to council for discussion.
I do have.
Excuse me, is there someone on, on remote?
Seeing none.
Okay. Do it.
Great. I would love to do it. So I just want to make clear that the council was not considering changing this date or changing anything. We had already approved that the Chamber of Commerce could close the streets for a certain number of occasions. I believe this date was already verbally reported to us at previous council meetings. Our town manager wanted to make sure that with the number of closures, that everything was okay with the council. And he didn't want to approve the permit, so he put it on the agenda for us to weigh in. So I want to make it clear that this was not generated from the town council. I also want to say that I'm very, very supportive of keeping this date. You know, this is approval of a permit application. I believe the town council has already acted and approved this. And, you know, it's, it's on our agenda again. So it's a little bit of an awkward situation. And I want to thank everyone who came out here to speak. I will be strongly supporting this. I think it's fantastic that we have three events in the same weekend. It's going to be a huge draw for Tiburon. I have not heard one complaint from any business or anybody, for that matter. I have not received one complaint about this from anybody. So, you know, I think we've got the Ark Road businesses represented. We've got the Chamber of Commerce represented and we have the school. Also, what I really like about this is I did read the, the reports and the, you know, letters. And the fact that you're going to work with Juneteenth and share resources and possibly save costs for everybody is a fantastic thing. But I don't expect we're going to see things like this on the agenda in the future because it is a permit application. It's not something that we would normally act on. So I want to thank you for your time and for coming here and for all the work you're doing to make Tiburon great for all our residents and visitors.
So let me comment on a broader perspective. We did globally approve a number of Friday Nights on Main closures. The concern was having three events on one afternoon and not having, not being sure from previous feedback about other events, how the road closures would affect the residents having so many hours in one weekend, and how it would affect some of the businesses because it is a debatable subject among some of them, whether it actually helps the businesses or not. But one of the things for sure it does is it helps the town and it helps create community. And I too would like to thank all of you who helped organize this. And I will suggest on our next agenda, since June twenty-third, is the sixtieth anniversary of the incorporation of Tiburon. And we have three wonderful events now for the community to participate in on one weekend that we pass a resolution that that particular weekend, the three events, including the schools, the Classics Car Show, and our diversity and inclusion Juneteenth celebration be declared Tiburon Celebrates Weekend. Unless there's an objection from the council, I would like to see that resolution on the next agenda. Thank you, everybody, for your work.
It's a great idea. I love that idea. Mayor Fredericks, great.
All right. Do we need to?
Can I just throw one more thing out?
Yes.
I mean, I would just say you'd also have to argue that closing the street on different weekends for two events is better than closing it all on one weekend. And I'm not necessarily saying that's logically consistent. I don't think there's any benefit or detriment to businesses to doing it sequentially. You're going to close the street for the same number of hours. So I don't think it was on the radar. But just as these two have talked about, like, you know, we, we sort of are, you direct what we do and we tell Greg what to do. And so there's this interplay of like, he's like, you know, well, go make good decisions. And he's like, well, if I make a decision and I crawl on it, that's bad for me. So he throws it back to us. And, you know, so just to be clear, when there was the emergency road closure, I said, you know, Greg did it. I blamed it all on him when everyone called me. So it's like, I get it, you know, Greg. It's, it's all good. But seriously, like, this is, you know, this, Delmar used to have the trolleys when there was graduation, which is also kind of a cool way to celebrate as a whole school. That has gone the way of the dodo. And this is another way to bring the whole school district together. And I think having it on this date is very important. I don't, I don't think there was ever a glimmer of, of intention to move the date. And so I'm sorry if there was any confusion on that respect.
Yes. And, and just with respect to history, I believe Delmar used to have a parade because I actually have some pictures of kids in the parade who've probably graduated from graduate school and gone on to careers. Anyway, I, I'm not putting a burden on you for next year, but if it happens, that'd be so cool. Any further comments?
Yeah. So thank you for everyone that organized. Thank you to the Chamber of Commerce. I think this is, this is a great event. And I think it also coincides with the end of the school year for some of the high schools and other schools where Tiburon residents also attend. So that's, that's a great event for them as well and, and for the Juneteenth folks in the Classic Car Show. It's going to be an exciting weekend. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the request.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. We look forward to it. At least I do. Okay, we move on now. We'll go back now to action item one. That is eleven plus Mulan Building Permit Extension. Staff report?
Yes. Good evening. Let me wait for that to come up. I'm going to give a staff report first and then we'll call you up as the applicant, Mr. Schick. We'll get, we'll, we'll give you your time too. I hope to do this really quickly so you can get right up there. Okay?
Thank you.
It's, you know what? It's all good. It's all good. So good evening, mayor and council members. Tonight, we are here to talk about a granting of a building permit extension for a property at eleven plus Mulan. So first, could you move that talking so I could see that? Is that possible? It's okay. The building permit was issued in June of 2021, I believe. And yes, 2021, my memory serves me properly. And the applicant and property owner has received three of the permitted six-month extensions. Most recent extension on this permit will expire June first, 2024. Various factors have resulted in delays and the applicants are requesting the town council consider a six-month extension and reduce or waive fees. Okay, Lee, I don't know if this has batteries. Oh, there we go. All building permits expire eighteen months after they are issued. The building official may grant one six-month extension free of charge. And then he may, well, to he this time, he may grant a subsequent six-month extension with the payment equal to the original construction cost. And then the building permit, the building official may grant a third six-month extension with a payment equal to three times the original construction cost. A fourth extension, which is what is before you tonight, may be granted by the town council with a payment of five times the original construction cost.
It's times the permit fee, not the construction cost, right? I hope.
Yeah.
Yes.
Construction permit costs.
Construction permit cost. Now you're really glad you came, right? It's going to cost you more. The building official has granted all these extensions, as I stated previously, and exhausted his authority. The fourth extension is before you tonight for consideration. And issuing of this extension includes a completion schedule, which was attached to your staff report. The bulk of the work that is remaining is interior and exterior finishes and landscaping prior to final inspections. The fee for the recommended extension would be two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred. The council at this time has discretion to modify the extension fee. Council has considered, if you remember, in the last year, several other projects that were cresting a similar extension. In each instance, the council has granted the extension and directed staff to impose the full fee, but prorate the fee amount if the project is finalized prior to the six-month deadline. So what we're recommending tonight is to grant a permit extension in accordance with the municipal code or modified terms if the council concludes the modification is warranted, or you may deny the request for a permit extension. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So I, I have a question just for clarification. If we deny the extension, they have to go through the whole permitting process again?
That is correct.
And, and explain to me, since it was brought up in some public emails we got, what is the rationale for basing the permit costs on the construction costs?
We've always looked at building valuation as a percentage to charge for permit fees.
And, and so what I was asking was whoever those policymakers were who did it in the beginning, what was the rationale? We no longer know.
Do you know that town manager at all, where that originated from? Or it's pretty much practiced throughout?
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty standard practice that building permit fees are based on the value of the project.
No, I understand it is not peculiar to us. I was just wondering.
I don't know what it.
I hate to be colloquial, but I was just wondering, what were they thinking?
So we have to set it's, in some ways, a value of a permit fee. And those are commensurate with how much your construction costs.
So the value of the permit, not just the cost, but the value of the permit depends on the costs of the construction?
That's correct.
Okay.
I would just like to clarify, it's, it's based off of the cost of the construction, not the value of the construction. So it's not based, if you spend a certain dollar amount and it's worth exponentially more, you're not paying a permit fee on the, the ultimate value. It's just on what you're paying, an estimate of what you're paying for the construction.
I do understand the question.
And just one more, just, just a reminder for council that when we talk about the building permit fee, when, when the original building permit is issued, the total building permit fee is made up of probably fifteen or twenty individual line items. This fee is, is five times one of those line items, the actual, what we call building permit fee. So it's not five times the entire original permit cost. It's five times of one line item in the permit.
So I have, I have a question for our, Dina, Dina, sorry, I always call you Dina. I was trying to call you by your title. Okay, okay, good. So I have a question about, stop it, Isaac. You're going to make me laugh. If there's any, were there any complaints to extending this permit? I am not aware of any. You mean from adjacent neighbors? Any complaints? Yeah. Is there any complaints from adjacent neighbors? And what was the original amount they paid?
Well, again.
I'm asking, Dina. You know, I don't, I don't have that in front of me. What it is, if you look at five times, the permit fee would come out to the two hundred thousand plus dollars that we're requesting. Okay. And so they paid that and then what else have they paid? No, what they've paid is up to this time, the other extensions. This one has not been paid. We're waiting to hear what the action is by the town council. And what we normal, what you have done in the past is look at that amount, requested that the applicant pay that amount to the town. And if they finish the project prior to that, then we prorate that amount back to them. Okay. And will, will we be hearing from the applicant? They'll be doing the presentation? He was gonna. Okay, then I'll, I'll hold my.
Okay, then I'll, I'll hold my questions until they present.
So are there any further questions of staff?
So, so just let me just, just so I understand. So they would have already paid the forty-six grand, which was the permit fee.
That's correct.
Because this is five X that. They would have paid that again. They would have paid three times that, like a hundred and
They did.
Thirty, whatever it is, thirty-four grand for the three X extension. And then this would be two twenty and on top of that.
That's correct.
Any further questions? I am seeing none. I will open it now for public comment. Would someone in the public like to comment?
I'm public?
Yes.
Yes, you are.
Okay. It's so funny being in a room and having anybody talking about the things that are going on in my head all the time.
Can you please sit at the mic so we can get that on, on? Thank you.
Anyway, my name is David Shawner.
Eat the mic. Thank you.
My name is David Shawner. My wife Judith Helman and I own the property at eleven place Mulan. We're here to request, I think, building extension and a waiving of the fees um to finish the project. This is Ed Fabel. He's the general contractor on the project. So if you want to stop me at any time and ask him questions, he's really good at talking into the mic. Um, Ed presented a letter to the town uh that at the end of April, and you were all sent it, I believe, on Tuesday. And it was included in the uh, on the website. It's kind of a lengthy letter that details a lot of the aspects, five primary ones that were out of our control, uh, completely out of our control to, that have affected the trajectory of this project and turned a two to two and a half year long project into a nearly three and a half year long project. I'm just going to summarize them real quick. COVID, we had to have our framing crews pull off a couple of different times. We had several subs have to pull off and they have to pull off for, you know, ten days at a time. That happened multiple times in twenty twenty-one. The supply chains still affected um getting less, but getting big things sent to the project has been a problem. Things that you normally take two months to get, take eight months to get slowed us down. We had one permit revision that took five months to turn around. And we were dead in the water on part of our project. Uh, during that time, I believe it was bleed over from COVID and staffing and issues that went on during that time between uh December twenty twenty-one and April twenty-two. Weather is another thing that's been out of our control. Um, in eighteen eighty-nine, in eighteen eighty-eight to eighteen ninety, there was fifty-four inches of rain in California. That's the most that's ever been recorded. Two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-four, there was fifty-two inches of rain. It's the second most ever recorded. I didn't, I looked it up. I didn't know that. So I thought, wow, it really was a big deal. And we had such ground saturation that we couldn't use a lot of our equipment many times, which caused tremendous delays. We storm wrapped the building before one of the big storms. It was completely ripped off the building and little chunks all over our neighborhood, which was fantastic to clean up. And a foot of standing water in two major areas of our home that we were not intending to remodel. So that added a hundred days to the project, just that one thing. Act of God, bomb cyclone. Can you see a picture from, or should I stand up? You see it from here, there?
Yeah.
Okay, so this picture here is um August twenty-one. This is after the primary demo. And um things have been taken down to the nubbins, some completely scraped off. This area right here was the area of that permit problem that we ran into. We ended up having to take fifty dump trucks of material off this area. Rebuild this whole area. Because in discovery, we found all these failed systems. And then off on-how back forty more dump trucks, compress, compressible soil to make it work. So that little project right there was a huge delay. And it was on the fifth item I'm talking about is discovery. You know, we started with one level of understanding of the project. And we had soils engineers and mechanical engineers and structural engineers. And everybody looked at it, dropped the plans, and then we started opening it up and found all these things that were done, gaddiwampas back when the house was built, and things that had substantially failed, like foundations. And so it was hard for us to anticipate that. And I know when you buy a used house and you're going to work on it, there's unknowns. But there's unknowns and then there's unknowns that are radical. And this was a radical one, uh, added tremendous time to the project. Um, here's what the house looks like yesterday. Beautiful, the exterior is almost completely done. And um it's basically landscaping, like they said on the thing, landscaping, softscape, hardscape, stone pathways. And um garage doors going on on Monday, scaffolding's coming down on Friday. And uh, we're, we're doing really well with this project. The interior is coming along tremendously. Um, two other things out of our control of the five I initially mentioned uh that have had an impact on our timeline have been the one thirty-three Sugarloaf project that has been uh impactful and ongoing through mu- most of our project. And the fifteen-place Mulan project, which is right next to us. And that started about a year and a half into our project, and it's going to finish a year from now. And it just means there's a lot more fussing every single day and slowing down of getting people in and getting people out, getting big trucks in, road closures and so forth. And we're part of that problem, no doubt. But we it's the environment and there's other thing, other people doing it, and we can't control what they're doing. So that and my last one is PG&E. And it's the least one, but it's probably a month, a whole month of our time wasted with them mandating that we have to put our own transformer on our property and do all these things. We do it, we get all the excavation and build walls and pads. And then they say, oh, we decided we're going to do it differently. You don't have to do that. That kind of thing. And, and they're out fussing. We've had them at our property five times in the last two months to put this one utility thing in. And they can't make up their minds. And it's just drags and drags and we, I can't, we can't control them, you know? So that's kind of the essence. And then I wanted to show you one last thing while you're here. This Gantt chart that's in your materials. And there's a lot of blue lines. There's a whole lot of blue lines in the beginning because that's April and May. They start petering out around June, and then you have just a few lines going out. So this early part here, um, like, for example, the garage door was supposed to be on two weeks ago. The garage door is going on Monday. So it's like, it's a little squishy. It's like a two and a half a week, pretty darn close to what's happening. But you take all these subcontractors out and get all their variables down, and you just end up with they're doing the landscaping and they're painting the walls and putting the wallpaper up and they're hanging the lamps and stuff. And it's, it's why we have confidence that we can get this thing done by September first, get it finalized and move into the house in September. And um that's it. That's why I'm here asking for some time to finish it and um to not have to uh pay a bunch more money to finish the house. Cause I mean, we've been working really hard. We haven't changed teams at all. Ed's been there. We love each other and hate each other by now. But I, I mean, the architect, every single one of the team members, it's the same team that we started with. The other day I counted thirty-eight people working on the house in the same time. We've been really trying hard to do this. We haven't been messing around. And um I think we've been pretty nice to the town. Everybody seems to like us and we get along. So anyway, I'm just asking for a little consideration and I hope you uh will consider that.
Let me ask you a question. I think some of that is, you have emailed us already. Uh, so it's all, um, all of it is a matter of public record.
Not the, not the photographs, but everything else is public.
But the data, yeah, thank you.
All the data.
Any questions?
Um, yeah, oh, go ahead, Jack.
Um, Mr. Fabel, at the end of your letter, you said, you, you, your ask was prorated fee based on the rental cost? I wasn't totally sure what you meant by that. Can you let me know what you meant?
Rental cost being, sorry. The rental cost being the per day fee based on the permit valuation extension. So the word rental was kind of um pedestrian. So I apologize if that's confusing.
Small mind.
It was poetry is what you meant.
I wish.
Uh, I have one, one question for both of you. Um, is there, is there anything that you think you could have done to make it go faster? I mean, is there anything you? Yeah.
Look at a helicopter bigger cruising.
Well, actually, I don't know. Actually, you know, I, I feel like we've done an amazing job managing the community, the, the street as well. We communicate with all the neighbors with any larger deliveries, um, any delays that they might experience. We have traffic control on the streets when those are happening. All the neighbors know about it. In fact, we actually even communicate with the other job project managers. So they know when we're impacting them. And hopefully, you know, we work around their impactions to us as well. Um, as far as doing things faster, there's always that hindsight. But um so many things came up on this project that were out of our control and they were just so large. Um, I can cite like the cottage. The cottage in itself had three large steel and wood moment frames of sizes I've never even seen before installed in this smallish cottage. And the only thing we could assume is that there was a heliport or helipad being planned at some point in its life. So, and that type of thing requires us to rip the roof off the structure and crane these big pieces out of there. And we also had deficiencies in the foundations and the drainage and the compaction of soils all around the buildings, which created all this excavation that David um already surmised. Um, and all these things run into hundreds of days. You know, when it, when it goes on and on, uh, we've had supply chain issues. Like right now, we're waiting for our stone deliveries from Europe. And these stone deliveries were supposed to be here four months ago. And then they were supposed to be here last month, and now it's going to be next month. And trying to coordinate and manage the workforce and subcontractors and their workforce is really complex, trying to keep everyone on site. And, you know, I can say that since our inception of this job, we've had a minimum of twenty-five, and as David cited, thirty-eight workers on the site every day. We, we run a construction project uh program called Coconstruct. And we have daily logins as to who's there and what they're doing, as well as our, our own team. In this situation, we hired an outside party to do structural um framing because of the size of, of this project. And we did all of the um non-structural framing along with them, um, which can be as much work as the structural framing when it comes down to it. But um where I'm going with this is, how did we get it to be faster? This is a thirteen thousand five hundred square foot home. And I think the baseline of eighteen or twenty-four months is based on probably a four thousand square foot home, which is kind of a normal size in Tiburon and, and even some smaller. Um, I don't believe it's possible to build this home in twenty-four months, even with the six months grace. Um, we've, we've worked hard. Our project manager, who hoped to be here tonight, Jeff was late because he had a late inspection with Doug Haight. Um, he's amazing. He has just been amazing onsite and, and all the engineering. In this particular project, we actually removed a large section of the main structural roof component to create a twenty-seven hundred square foot um rooftop deck that has magnificent views. It's so spectacular. And underneath that rooftop deck is an open concept kitchen and, and family room that is also quite expansive. Um, in, in doing so, that created a whole lot of steel and commercial steel, pandex steel. And quite frankly, we had to verify dimensions. The, the steel plan shop drawings were seventy-six full-size pages of drawings. That in itself was daunting. But um, I feel like everything could be done faster in hindsight, you know? But we are impacted with window companies' delivery times and, and everyone else. And there's just a lot of work going on. So the small businesses, they're impacted too. You know, so we've had to manage the amount of work onsite based on how many vehicles we can get onsite. And because we actually have the ability to park in three address locations and off-site, we've actually had anywhere from twelve to eighteen vehicles and carpooling with most every day. So I feel like we've tried very hard to do our share. David uh and Judith live right next door. And they've hired a really professional team. In the, in the beginning, we had probably six architect associates working on this project, as well as an interiors design team, all the engineering's, all the supporting casts. It's just a big project.
And can you also address the rain? It looks like you guys got flooded out.
We did. Uh, we actually, as David said, we, we put up a protective film on the scaffold that was supposed to give us water protection and work through the winter. And that was, three days later, we had that seventy-five mile an hour uh windstorm that dropped six inches of rain on us. And in David's property, he's actually got a racquetball court and a sauna twenty feet below grade. And that thing was pretty full with water. So, and also, you know, we, we've, we found out, and that was early on. We found out at that time that the drainage systems to whatever that could possibly have been was not working at all. And so we had to go in and do a whole lot of um negative side uh waterproofing on the below-grade uh spaces and a lot of uh sump pumps and drainages uh to put in so we can uh be assured that this won't, this event won't happen again when it rains hard. And part of the reason why this did happen was without our knowing, the entire project was basically surrounded by concrete walkways, paths, full patios. And so there was no uh permeable surface. And when we pulled all of those things out for our new landscaping, everything became permeable. And, and it just went straight to the bottom and flooded the racquetball court and sauna. And, and that was just, that was just one major event. We've had, as you know, many, you know, atmospheric river events happen that um makes things complicated to work through.
Uh, so I, I, I actually have a question. Uh, what do you foresee that might be future constraints on meeting the new schedule that you're proposing?
So we do have some dependencies, and that is PG&E for one, as always. And, and David mentioned thirty days, but we've actually been at this PG&E application for almost a year and a quarter. Um, at, without a fine, without a resolve at this time. And they've trenched up and down the street three times, putting in utilities and just being really difficult. I mean, actually, full-size massive boom trucks parking on neighbors' driveways. They don't have any regard to the neighborhood and we're trying to manage them. And they're, they're above God and everybody else according to them. So it's been, it's been complicated. But also dependencies, PG&E, our stone delivery that I mentioned is four months behind its schedule to come into port uh middle of June and a one to four day delivery time. That's still out there. Um, but, and then of course, um, we've got our landscaping and then all the hardscapes to follow. So, and that's a fair amount of work. But we feel like in our, our landscape, uh, masonry contractors have assured us that with everything available to them, they can finish the project in two months, which would be the end of, um, they're going to start mid-June, so mid-August. And our landscape contractor, he's already been there for four months. So most of the infrastructure, uh, lighting and irrigation and everything is in place. So he's going to move into setting rooftop planter boxes and, and um planting those all out and, and plantings and trees around the property while we're doing our masonry work. So we feel like we're, we're, we're on the right path. But it could get sidetracked, I would say, because almost everything can uh by a few weeks.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Yeah, can I just put you on the spot one more time? I mean, so one of the things that happens when we have a lot of extensions are because the applicants end up changing things as the project goes on. Do you have, can you qualify or quantify like how much change orders have contributed to this? Where, because that is sort of in your control, right?
There's been a fair amount of change. There's been a fair amount of change orders and like I started to say, we hired a outside framing contractor to do the bulk of the work. We're, we're a team of ten to twelve men on this job site every day. And the size of this project, we didn't feel like we could actually handle, even though we do all of our own foundations, all of our own framing typically. The architectural framing was a lot of change because that, those elevations didn't actually come to us until we'd framed the building. So we did have to go back and make changes to accommodate the interior designers and, and David and Judith's designers.
Most of those, any of those ma, any of those big things were from the architect. It wasn't like we were.
Oh, yeah, it wasn't David and Judith.
Around telling you to make different things because the house that was drawn. Geez, the first week architect looked at the house, he went home and he's kind of an artist kind of guy and he puts some music on it. Takes his colored pencils out and he drew our house. If you look at that original drawing and you look at what Ed did to build this.
It looks the same.
It's the same thing. So, yeah.
I've watched this architect draw freehand and he can draw, he can draw freehand to a quarter inch scale. He's, he's, he's a very talented artist and architect. And you know, what, what they've achieved and what we've achieved here is this magnificent Tuscan villa, which was David and Judith's vision on this, you know, ever since the beginning. And it's just going to be a stunning, beautiful home for the neighborhood. And so we're excited about it, we're proud of it, and we wish we would have gotten it done in our two and a half years that we anticipated originally.
Any further questions or comments for the applicants? I'm seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Uh, can we run back just for a second to ask the, the staff question? So what determines the duration of a permit?
From when it's issued, so.
To.
To when it ends. So, so it was issued in June of twenty twenty one. And then it's good for eighteen months and then you need to ask for those extensions after that time.
And that applies to a project, no matter how big or complex it is.
That is correct.
Same period of time.
That is correct.
Thank you. All right. Is there any further public comment?
Oh, we're good. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else in the public would like to make a comment? Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
I'm seeing none. Anything on Zoom?
Seeing none.
All right, bring it back now to council for discussion.
Sure, I have a, I have a comment. So, yeah, I really want to talk about this one. So I think this is an exception. I really see this project as an exception because here we have a builder, we have a homeowner. They are trying as hard as they can to get the project done. When I looked at exhibit, I think two, it says penalties next to the, next to the two hundred and twenty eight thousand seven hundred dollar fee, it says penalties. Five times the permit fee is a penalty. I don't believe they should be penalized. I know during the winter storms that we had this year, my entire backyard was flying everywhere. And you know, I had to continually have people, if I wasn't in town, go to the house. Did the barbecue fall over? Where is it? You know? Is it at the neighbor's house, you know? And then the neighbor calls and says the barbecue's flying. I said, oh God, you know, we put, you know, sandbags in it. Anyway, so you know, I, I think the issues that have been presented are real. And you know, when you look at also the fact that, you know, this is a complicated project. This is not a smaller home. This, this brought so many ideas into my mind about how are we doing our permits? Eighteen months for anything for a four thousand square foot home, for a thirteen thousand four hundred square foot home? It doesn't seem like that's the right formula. So I, that's something I would like to look at in the future. Is it possible to size permits according, to, to change the length of a permit according to the size and complexity of the construction? It's something I'd like for us to look at. I'd also like for us to look at the fact that also this is a project that has paid how much in fees? A hundred, at least a hundred and thirty four thousand. And does anyone know how much else has been paid by these project? Do you know?
We have the initial charge and then we paid the initial charge again and then three times. So that's like two hundred and thirty five thousand in, in permits.
Okay, so the town here is not losing any money. These, uh, the homeowner and, and the contractor, you know, they have paid the town fees. You know, part, part of what we do as a town is we try to make things easy for our residents. Building a home, you know, remodeling your home. I would like to see these things be, be easy. There are a lot of effects lingering because of COVID in terms of getting certain types of equipment. I know all of the components that have chips, there's still a delay, even though it's years after COVID because there was a chip delay. And then that not only affected manufacturing, but it also affected, you know, a lot of these places were closed down. A lot of our homes now are smart homes. There's, there's stuff that you just can't get or you have to wait six or eight months. I know people are waiting a year to get a new refrigerator. So I really feel like in this case that we should grant the six month extension. We should waive the additional permit fees. I believe the fees have been paid. I would also like to look at, uh, if it's possible, establishing criteria of why we're, we're doing five times the permit fee, you know, for a six month extension when, you know, the, the builders and the builder and the homeowner are really trying to get the project done. I mean, I see an almost finished house. And I know that we as a town can't sign off on a final occupancy permit until everything's done. But you know, to the extent that they're waiting for PG&E, uh, you know, you might be waiting a lifetime for PG&E. So, uh, you know, just be prepared for that. But, um, you know, I think that we really have to be, look at each of these cases differently because I really think you have been trying very hard. And that's why I was asking some of the questions, like is there something you feel like you didn't do? Also, the fact that neighbors are not complaining. Why would we penalize these people for building their home? So tell me how you really feel. That is how I feel. I think that you guys have been working with our staff and doing everything the way you should. So I'm in favor of not having any penalty certainly and for giving another six month extension.
So let me just briefly say what permits are about. I, I think two of the major purposes of permits is to recoup some staff time because they do spend time looking at permits, making sure they conform with whatever ordinances and codes apply. But there are also incentives to minimize the impacts on the neighborhood. This sounds like a very busy neighborhood. We may not have heard complaints about this particular project because there's so much going on. That said, and that for me is just the definition of what permits do. I too would like to see some relief on this rather extraordinary charge, given the extraordinary circumstances. This building went forward on, but considering the permit fees, supply and incentive to minimize impacts and to get the project done insofar as it is under the control of the contractor. Um, I would even entertain a rational thought about reducing the fee, maybe prorating it, still keeping the incentive to finish. And if it isn't finished, if it's finished beforehand, maybe the super incentive would be forgiving the whole thing. And if it's, comes back for another extension, we can reconsider.
So just out of curiosity, this is totally hypothetical. I'm not going down this route, but like if they didn't finish in six months, if we imposed the whole permit penalty and they didn't finish in six months, what would they be doing six months from now?
Coming back to you for another, excuse me, coming back to you for another extension.
At eight X or what, like what's the multiplier then?
Seven.
It's seven times.
So, so these two are the budget committee for the twenty twenty four, twenty five budget. And they're saying that they want to give you relief. I feel like we're in good financial standing there, so I'm not worried about that. I definitely appreciate your letter. I thought the details in it were fantastic. And particularly the soils instability that was unavoidably detected, you know, there's no way you could have detected that. PG&E, that brings back PTSD for me because everybody has a PG&E story, right? I appreciate, in fact, the neighbor wrote a letter saying that you guys have been super considerate. That's, that's really important and it's nice to see that you work that way. I'm definitely inclined to offer as much relief as we can as well on this one. That said philosophically, right, I totally get the, the escalating nature of the penalties because you definitely want to incentivize people to finish their projects. So, um, you know, I, I hope we're all going in the same direction here where it's like, we want to give you relief, but if it's not done in six months, then we have something kick in. And shake your head like yes or no, you're crazy is this point. But I want to hear from Councilmember Nick Farhas. But, but, um, but, but I totally agree with, with both Mayor Fredericks and Vice Mayor Thier in terms of this. If there's ever been a case for exemptions from penalties. This is, and again, like you having written that letter is so important because it's not just how we feel on a given day. Like it's very quantifiable metrics that demonstrate, and I really, really appreciate that. So, you know, whatever, curious here what Councilmember Nick Farhas, then we can gin up some formula that makes sense for all of us.
I think we've spent a lot of time on this issue. I'd love to move forward. So I don't.
I, I can make a motion. So I move that we grant the six month extension and waive the fees and have them come back in six months and report to us. Or, or through, through Dina, if it's, if it's done, it's done.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. You're thinking of substitute motion?
Yeah, so. All right, let me offer a substitute motion and the way to make it die is to not second it. I, I would like to keep the incentive in place. So I would like to suggest that we prorate the incent, the penalties. And if they actually finish ahead, the bonus would be to forgive the penalty.
And then so if they didn't finish ahead.
They would have to pay the prorated bonus at the end, other prorated penalty at the end.
So Mayor, may I ask a question to clarify since we're going to have to impose whatever you do upon them? So are you saying that you would impose the fee or that you're prorating fee? I'm not.
You would prorate the fee, but if they finish ahead of time, you would forgive the whole fee.
So you, so I, I want to make sure because you know what we normally do is we have to charge the fee in order for them to proceed if you deter, if you wish to impose a fee. And then we would, we've been, we would prorate based on when they finish. Or if they do it in thirty days, then five months are returned from that two hundred thousand. So I'm not really sure what you're asking us to do to calculate something.
Also, what, what I was saying is whatever accumulates as they, as you prorate is forgiven. So they actually end up paying nothing if they finish ahead of time.
I think she's saying they'd get a refund, but this, this motion needs a second. So if there's no second, then we will vote on the original motion.
Yes, we will. Is there a second? I'm hearing no second. Let's vote on the original motion.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 So we have just voted to.
So you have a six month extension, no fees.
We have just voted to extend the permit six months and waive the fee. Waive the penalty.
We better not see you again.
Thanks so much. I know the town of, you know, and Wallace has been wrestling with this idea of the dimension of a project.
The town of Ross, you said?
And no valley, no valley grants three years on projects, uh, five million dollars and more.
Yeah, that was another great point you made in the letter, actually.
Can you contact me directly and get my information from our town clerk? Okay, thanks, because I'd like to follow up on this.
And thank you very much. Please do finish on time if it's under your control.
Certainly will. Thank you so much.
All right, we move now to action item two. That is the California Air Resources Board consider adoption of a resolution accepting a grant from CARB related to the Angel Island Ferry electrification project. And consider authorization for the town manager to execute agreements related to the implementation of the grant program. Is there a staff report?
There is, Madam Mayor, thank you. As all of you know, Angel Island Ferry is a local family owned business, which has been carrying passengers since nineteen fifty nine. They operate three vessels and carry approximately a hundred thousand passengers per year from downtown Tiburon. Most of these folks visit Angel Island State Park, but Angel Island Ferry also offers a variety of other services, including whale watches, sunset tours and private charters. In December twenty twenty two, the California Air Resources Board, which I will refer to as CARB as we move forward, adopted new amendments to some of their regulations. And I'll just summarize it, which essentially requires Angel Island Ferry's short run ferry vessels to be zero emissions by the end of calendar year twenty twenty five. Following the adoption of those rules in twenty twenty three, CARB's Mobile Source Control Division issued a grant solicitation for what are called demonstration and pilot project grants to assist operators in meeting these new requirements. Sorry, I'm having a little trouble here. After that grant program was opened up, Angel Island Ferry approached, that grant program is only open to public entities and nonprofits as an applicant. So when that grant program was opened up, Angel Island Ferry approached the town, asking if the town would sort of sponsor a grant application on their behalf. And we brought that, uh, we brought that idea to council back in, I believe, September twenty three. And council unanimously directed staff to work with Angel Island Ferry in submitting a grant application, which was submitted in December of twenty twenty three. And as you all know, now in April, we were informed by CARB that the town has been preliminarily awarded twenty four million forty nine thousand five hundred and fifty two in funding from the grant program. And we've copied, we've attached a copy of that award letter to the staff report. The grant would essentially facilitate the completion of four projects. Two propulsion vessel conversions. So two of the existing Angel Island Ferry vessels would be converted from diesel propulsion to electric propulsion. And that is the Bonita and the Angel Island. And then the third, the third component is the sale of the motor vessel Tamil Pious and the construction of a brand new vessel, which would be also an electric vessel. And the fourth component is the infrastructure upgrades that are necessary on land to facilitate the charging equipment for the upgraded vessels and the new vessel. In the staff report, I've provided a table which summarizes the grant funding. And essentially, the four projects would receive twenty two million and six hundred and thirty nine thousand and some change of funding. And there would also be an additional one point four million dollars of grant administration funds, which brings you to the total of twenty four million forty nine thousand five fifty three. In addition, their grant requires a bunch, a, a, a lot of match funding. Some which is cash match and other which is in-kind match, which Angel Island Ferry has demonstrated they will be able to provide. If council wishes the town to move forward with accepting this grant, there are a number of actions that the council needs to take. And they're all included in a resolution, which we provided in the staff, with the staff report. I will summarize what council would be authorizing and approving as part of that resolution. You would be finding that the project is exempt from CEQA. You'd accept the grant from CARB and approve as to form the draft grant agreement between the town and CARB. And you'd authorize the town manager to execute the final agreement once approved by the town attorney. You'd also approve as to form the grant subaward agreement with Angel Island Tiburon Ferry, authorizing the town manager to execute that agreement after approval by the town attorney. And one thing I hadn't touched on yet is as part of the grant, the town's role in the grant would be administering essentially the grant itself, which means the, the funds, the reimbursement of funds. would be administering essentially the grant itself, which means the, the funds, the reimbursement of funds, um, the submittal of, uh, the requisite documentation to get funds from CARB. That, we, we don't believe the town is staffed or has enough staff to actually provide that level of grant administration, so we're proposing to use our town engineer, Mo Engineering, um, to provide grant administration services associated with the grant, which would be fully reimbursed by the grant. Um, so the last item, uh, in the resolution is you'd be approving the professional service agreement with Mo Engineering, um, for grant administration services and authorizing me to sign that as well. With that, I will, uh, stop and, and accept, have any questions from council? And I know in the audience, there are representatives of Angel Island Ferry and their partners, who I believe would, would sure would love to speak, so.
Are there any questions? Um, I just have one. So, so the town's responsibility is administering the grant. Does, do any of the projects, um, occur on town property?
The, the one aspect of the infrastructure upgrade will be required upgrades to PG&E infrastructure. And some of that work will, will occur in town right-of-way. For instance, there is a existing transformer that's in a vault on Main Street, Lower Main Street. That transformer will need to be upgraded as part of this grant project. PG&E, as part of the grant application process, has committed to doing that work at their cost.
So there's no cost to the town to anything that occurs on town right-of-way?
That's correct.
Thank you. Any further questions? I am seeing none, uh, from the council. Uh, this is the time for public comment. Would anyone in the public like to comment?
First of all, hello. I want to say thank you to the excellent staff at the town of Tiburon. Without them, there is no way we have, could have come to this position. I mean, amazing, Graham, super genius, and John Hoffman writing him from Texas at a Taco Bell convention, who is so supportive of us. Do you have any questions?
Yes, for the record, why don't you tell us who you are?
Oh, well, that, you don't know, Alice?
Maggie McDonough, Angel Island Tiburon Ferry.
Thank you, Maggie.
You're welcome. Little pashy, there we go. Very excited, very humbled by this opportunity. I'm so excited for the town as a whole with this. It's really fantastic.
And, and just looking at it in the overall, um, as an opportunity to reduce greenhouse gases, it is a wonderful project.
Huge, huge, impacting not just the town, but east of the town and the surrounding areas. It's gonna be amazing.
Any questions, comments from?
I, I, I have a comment, or well, kind of a, yeah, it's a comment. So I just, uh, wanted to, uh, thank our, our town, our staff, um, our town manager, and everyone who worked on this. Um, and I also want to thank, um, you both. I want to thank you, Maggie, you know, since nineteen fifty-nine, your family has run a ferry service and ran three boats. You know, I'm, there, there are not people out running ferry services, okay? People just don't do that. The cost is very high, the insurance is prohibitive, and the fact that she has managed and the family has managed and, and their employees to run this ferry service. And then, once again, you're putting Tiburon on the map. Who gets twenty-four million dollars from CARB? Tiburon does. What are we gonna do? We're gonna electrify three ferries. All of our ferry service is gonna be electric. What? We're teasing each other. Anyway, all your fair, all the ferry service is gonna be electric. Once again, Tiburon is setting the standard for climate goals. We're gonna reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and I want to thank you. I want to thank you for staying in Tiburon. I want to ask everybody here to ride the ferry, ride the ferry at least three times a week. We gotta support Maggie. We gotta support this business, and this is what makes, makes Tiburon great. It's everybody working together. It's the town supporting the grant. It's the grant being won, a huge grant. And I just want to thank you for, uh, having your business here and for making Tiburon great.
Thank you, Holly. Those are very kind ones. Thank you.
Yes, Graham, did you want to?
Yes, hi, I'm Graham, woo, that's loud, um, Graham Balch, the CEO of Green Yachts, the one doing the electrification of Maggie's vessels. And I am not a resident of Tiburon, Tiburon. I am so incredibly impressed with your town. The staff have been extraordinary to work with, and I really want to thank David Ashu and Greg Chinas for their amazing work, and you have incredible staff working in this town that I see staff from a lot of municipalities through what I do, and you've got some of the best I've seen, so just incredible. And I also, um, just think that this project is so amazing, not just leading the nation in marine electrification, which Maggie is doing, but this is one of the most extraordinary public-private partnerships that we are part of. The fact that you have the town of Tiburon bending over backwards to help the businesses in the town get this grant, the fact that you have restaurant owners, uh, and, you know, AC Ventures coming up with an agreement to put solar on their restaurants in order to power the ferry, which also, by the way, is going to help to power some of the refrigerators during blackouts, so there's no food spoilage. This is one of the most extraordinary partnerships I've ever seen in the nation, and it's incredible that it's happening here in this town. We at Green Yachts are just privileged to be able to work with somebody so wonderful as Maggie. We have been through a lot over the last three years. The project is going to be hard over the next couple of years. We're gonna need your encouragement and support, and when you come ride on the ferry, please stop in and give Maggie a hug in the helm.
Oh, jeez.
Because, because this is a difficult, hard project, and we've done a big step by getting the funding, but now we've got a lot of work to do, and, 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 um, I'm sure she could use the enthusiasm and the support from the town of Tiburon, just knowing, like, we're behind you. And so I'm just, and really, and we're very lucky, because the person who has done the most electric propulsion installs in the world will be the one leading the installs on her boat. Um, so we've got a really good team. We're gonna do a great job, not just for Maggie, but for the entire town, and it's such a pleasure to be part of it, but more than anything, I just want to say thank you to the town of Tiburon. None of this would have happened without the town of Tiburon. Thank you.
Um, thank you. Thank you, Graham. Thank you, Maggie, and to the public, I'd like to say, remember that Maggie is gonna be very busy, so control your impulses to hug her.
We're so grateful.
Alice, can I say one? Thank you, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention David Ashu. I'm sorry, I, I left you out, and I should not have. Um, and, uh, yeah, so, thank you.
Yes. All right, anything further?
Nope.
Thank you very much.
So.
Is there any further public comment? I'm seeing none in the room. Is there any online?
Seeing none.
Uh, let's bring it back to council now for discussion if needed and adoption of the resolution. Any comments?
I was just gonna move adoption.
Yeah, uh, I, I think this is, this is pretty exciting. I think, um, you know, Tiburon getting a chance to lead the way doesn't happen very often, um, so this is, this is an exciting one, um, for us too. I'd love to move to adopt the, um, the resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all. This is historic, momentous. Thank you. All right, uh, we have made our way to action item three, Transportation and Infrastructure Study. Uh, is there a staff report? Well, while you bring it up, I will say this is to consider authorization of the town manager to execute an agreement with parametrics and an amount not to exceed three hundred and sixty thousand dollars to authorize a fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget amendment in the amount of a hundred and thousand dollars to fund the project activities in fiscal year twenty-four, and to direct the staff to include the remaining contract amount to be budgeted in fiscal year twenty-five, and consider appointing a council member to the advisory committee to work with staff on the project. Staff report.
Madam Mayor, could I interrupt for one moment? Um, I, I want to apologize, but I, I got some really bad fish last night, and I'm trying to hold it together, so, um, I, I just have to, I'm feeling really, really sick, so it's just food. So I've, I think I'd better go. I don't want to, um, just walk out, so, yeah.
I was trying to make it through the meeting. I just, yeah.
Fish, it's not.
Yeah.
Are we taking a two-minute recess? I'm so energetic, jeez. I'm just curious about my math on this.
No, it was just you.
You're welcome. Like I did anything?
No, it wasn't you, it's whatever. I don't know why they were confused.
Okay, okay.
But, yeah, it just, I, I don't even think we needed the word "trod," right? It was either like, they paid the whole thing at the end, or it gets forgiven if they finish the point. I think that one would have confused somebody else. Yeah, I had to. You should have seconded it.
Yeah. You owe me coffee. Sure, you, you bring it up. I'm gonna laugh at you. All right, so we're gonna reconvene in another minute. Did we lose our audience? Are they out there waiting to come in? Are they gone? Nope. We do. Um, are people, Dina, are people out there waiting to come in?
No, they're out there talking, so I just asked them.
Oh, but they're still, here they come. All right, we're about to reconvene. The council meeting for May fifteenth. I wish there was a timer that would automatically go off. Okay. All right, here we go. Uh, we are now on action item three, Transportation and Infrastructure Study. Um, and we are awaiting the return of our town manager, or are you gonna give a report, David?
I'll give the report.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor, esteemed council members, members of the public. Uh, this evening, um, town staff is recommending that town council authorize the town manager again to execute a professional services agreement, subject to the approval of the town attorney as to form with Parametrics Inc. to assist the town in developing, uh, the Town of Tiburon Transportation and Infrastructure Study in the amount not to exceed three hundred and sixty thousand, also to authorize a fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget amendment in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars to fund the project activities during this current fiscal year, with the source of funding being the American Rescue Plan funds, and direct staff also to include the anticipated remaining contract amount in the fiscal year twenty-five budget, and also consider appointing a council member to the, to an advisory group that'll work with staff and the consultants as the project proceeds. A little background on, uh, this, uh, project here, the Town of Tiburon Council at your, uh, December sixth, twenty twenty-three meeting, uh, you discussed a proposed scope of work for a request for proposals related to a traffic study on Tiburon Boulevard, and approved the RFP at your January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four meeting. Town staff released the RFP for advertisement on February ninth, twenty twenty-four, and we received three proposals from qualified firms on March thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, the three firms were Traffic Reduction Consulting, Parametrics Inc., Kim Lee Horn and Associates, Inc., as the three. Uh, the three firms were interviewed by, uh, the selection committee, a selection committee on May first, twenty twenty-four, and the committee included staff from Public Works, Tiburon Public Works and Tiburon Planning Departments, uh, Tiburon Town Council and the Post Commission, uh, the City of Belvedere Town Council, and also the City of Belvedere Traffic Relief JPA Board Member. Uh, selection committee found Parametrics Inc. to be the most qualified consultant for this project, and below our, is a list of supporting elements that determined the selection panel's decision. Um, they included, but not limited to, commitment to interactive community outreach, experience working with Caltrans on current projects in Southern Marin, uh, developed successful roadmaps on similar projects for the City of Mill Valley, County of Marin, and the Town of San Anselmo, deep knowledge of school travel conditions in Tiburon. Uh, their written and oral presentation, uh, their enthusiastic approach to trying to solve our traffic problems on Tiburon Boulevard, for, uh, forward-thinking of multimodal approaches, and a solid team and cohesive presentation. In addition to the service proposal detailed their approach to the project, Parametrics Inc. also submitted a separate fee proposal to perform the work that totaled, uh, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Uh, uh, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars, and staff negotiated that down to three hundred and sixty thousand. We removed, um, uh, one public outreach workshop, and we are combining it, uh, into a town council meeting with one. And then there are some other elements and tasks in there that include research on existing conditions on Tiburon Boulevard, and we have a lot of that information that we can provide, uh, to them, which will further reduce the amount of time that may be spent on developing this plan. Uh, the fin- financial impact here, um, funding for this project was not included in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget, so if council chooses to move forward with the work, a budget amendment will be required. Uh, council previously earmarked a hundred thousand dollars of American Rescue Plan funds for this work, which will be sufficient to cover the expenses incurred in this current fiscal year to get us through the end of June. And staff is also recommending town council approve a fiscal, fiscal year twenty-four budget amendment in the amount of a hundred thousand, with sources of funds being amended, being the American Rescue Plan funds, and also direct staff to include the remaining contract amount in the upcoming fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget. And again, going back to the recommendations as we, uh, stated earlier, uh, authorize the town manager to execute a professional services agreement, subject to approval of the town attorney as to form with Parametrics Inc. to assist the town with development of a Town of Tiburon Transportation and Infrastructure Study in the amount not to exceed three hundred and sixty thousand, authorize a fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget amendment in the amount of a hundred thousand to fund the project activities in fiscal year twenty twenty-four, with the source of funds being American Rescue Plan funds, and direct staff to include the anticipated remaining contract amount in the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget, and also consider appointing a council member to an advisory group, working with staff and the consultant as the pro- project proceeds. And with that, uh, I am available for any questions.
Are there any questions?
Yes. Um, so in the, um, exhibit four, um, it references the town in, under recitals, the town wishes to con- to contract for consultant to provide the services described in exhibit one, services, which is attached here to and incorporated herein by reference. Where is that? Is that an exhibit one of the agenda? Because there isn't a section in that RFP document called services.
I'm gonna open it up real fast, yes.
Was that, did that answer your question?
No, no, no. I, I'm waiting for the, uh, the, uh, file to open up for me.
Really? Our public works engineer can't get his computer to respond?
Oh, there we go. I have to, with all the security, yeah, I have to authenticate it.
Excuse me, while David's doing that, uh, council member Nick Far, are you asking what the scope of service will, will be? Well, that, I think, I believe that's exhibit two.
So in, in the agreement that we're looking at here, which is exhibit four, it says the town wishes to. So in in the agreement that we're looking at here, which is exhibit four, it says the town wishes to. Contract with consultant for, to provide services described in exhibit one services, which is attached here too. And incorporated herein by reference.
Oh, uh, that that right there is the draft agreement that we'll sign once you approve it and the proposal itself is the scope of work.
So the whole, the whole RFP is the scope of work?
Correct.
Okay.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Um, yeah, so sorry, I I tried to read the RFP and the um.
Yeah.
And the scope of work, but I, um. What I was not able to read explicitly, and maybe it's in there and I just didn't get it, is like what, what I would like, and I'm. Maybe I said it at previous meetings, maybe not, but I need this from this, from whoever provides this service to us. I need. A, after they do their analysis, I need a list of potential improvement ideas. Infrastructure, whatever. How much they'll cost and then what the anticipated traffic benefit will be. So that subsequent to that, we can then go and decide what we spend money on to improve traffic. But is that ex- like explicitly part of their deliverable?
That is correct, so that will be in phase two of the project. Between the months of December and February, they will be drafting. A, a immediate and long-term implementation plan that will tell us what can and cannot go. Or wh- what type of projects can be completed and done on Tiburon Boulevard, including cost. And all those projects that they present to town council in March of twenty twenty-five will be vetted with Caltrans, so there'll be approved. Elements that they can uh provide for the town to consider.
Your friend, and and so, y- you know, just from my lo- long experience on TAM, it seems to me that this kind of planning. Actually has the potential uh to set us up in a better position for the kind of competitive funding where they wanna see how close you are. To shovel-ready and how far back you planned it. Is this the kind of document we're gonna end up with?
Absolutely, and also what's nice about this document, we are actually preparing it uh prior to Caltrans even. They just started their engineering project for the pavement rehab of Tiburon Boulevard. They're anticipating to complete their design uh plans by the end of twenty twenty-five. So we'll have a lot of information here for them. And if this study shows that they need to make some improvements along Tiburon Boulevard. Uh, we'll have enough time for them to implement that in their project if it's deemed a safety issue that they have to uh, uh, complete.
If it's a safety.
Safety, typically if it's a safety and congestion issue, they'll look at it. Um, again, with funding, uh, we'll have to see if they can incorporate it, but if it's earmarked as a safety issue. And something that can mitigate congestion on their dime while they're still designing. These consultants have had a lot of successful projects working with Caltrans, that they're gonna push that project through with their design. And I also wanna also mention that uh Caltrans has a lot of money right now that they're trying to find places for them to uh. Spend along their highway, their corridors, and and part of that, part of that money that they have right now is for a water treatment runoff. Stormwater runoff. Um, I just had a conversation with Caltrans uh this afternoon with the fiber project. And he noted that uh, you know, they, do we have any other areas on Tiburon Boulevard that we can use this money, cause they, the state is mandating them to spend it? So this is another good project here with the study, if we show that um. We're widening some of the lanes or adding some lanes, or there's been talks about maybe a roundabout, uh, you know. At Tressel Glen and Tiburon Boulevard, we can all incorporate water treatment with this project, which will pay for these improvements.
Um, and roll back to, so this will include, excuse me, consideration of the benefits of the fiber project? Is this the project that we keep talking about that will allow uh Caltrans to do uh real-time traffic management?
Good, correct, so this, what we are, this study here is basically hand, going hand in hand with their design right now, we're starting at the same time. And uh, any recommendations or any studies that come up, any, any type of elements that come up here that can help them uh with their design. Uh, it'll, it'll be mentioned and discussed with Caltrans. There's a lot of coordination with the, with the consultants and Caltrans. As they're conducting this study.
And I guess the projects feed into one another, cause it seems to me, excuse me, if they're looking at. Real-time traffic management, when there are new proposals for pedestrian crossing. Will have a mechanism and data in place to consider the impacts of that.
Uh, absolutely, so they will be looking at all existing future uh counts, uh, studying all the traffic signals. Um, what, uh, as council member, uh, Nick Farr mentioned, you know, what the re- what the uh outcome would be if, if a crosswalk is added. Or a signal's added, what would happen to traffic on Tiburon Boulevard? As you can see, we experienced some issues. Uh, the last couple of days on Tiburon Boulevard, but uh, not that this would solve it unforeseen, but. This right here would be a good plan, short-term and long-term plan for the town to follow. And and the good thing about this plan would be that everything that is proposed to town council next year would be vetted with Caltrans. And those elements would be approved by Caltrans and the plan will be completed. Prior to uh Caltrans completing their final engineering plans for the pavement work, which. I believe next March, they'll be right around sixty-five percent. It's, it's the perfect time for us to implement and add some of these features that the consultant would recommend.
Thank you, David. Is there any further, yes?
Yeah, it's, i- i- I think it's also important to clarify that uh, that our town. Uh, thanks to the housing element updates that we've made, uh, is poised to add a significant amount of housing. Um, if that ever gets developed, but I think when we're thinking about planning roads and we're thinking about uh ingress and egress uh from Tiburon. Um, it's, it's also gonna be really important to take into account the four hundred units that are zoned for down, four hundred plus units that are zoned for downtown. And then also the, the two hundred or so units that are, are zoned for outside of downtown.
That was correct, yes, uh, per the RFP, they have to take that into consideration for future trips with uh. Uh, housing element, the housing element that was recently adopted. And it also includes any development and also uh construction work with the City of Belvedere as well.
Right, um, it's also really, it, like, the, the, I, I think, uh, council member Ryan also mentioned this, but. Solutions are the reason we're doing this RFP, so I, I think it's really important that, that any consultants that we bring in and any plan that we have. We've gotta identify the problem, what's causing the problem, and then we've gotta have. A reasonable set of solutions that we can, we can do to help alleviate the traffic, because. It's, a- at least from, from what I'm, I'm experiencing and from what I'm, what I'm, I'm hearing about, it's, it's only getting worse. And if the PG&E work is any, is any uh indication, any little thing that happens on Tiburon Boulevard. Can throw everything out of whack, so um, solutions are 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 really important, and I think what we're. What I'm hoping to get out of, out of this process, it's a very expensive process and. It sounds like I should have potentially gone into a career as a consultant based on the hourly rates in this table, but um. Uh, I think solutions are 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 really, really important coming out of this.
And and so, will it be finely tuned, so for instance, if we uh build all these units? There's a hypothesis that people who live there will actually work downtown, and so it will change the travel patterns. Does this team have the width to incorporate that kind of policy change and?
Yes, they do. They, they are a, a, a deep firm with a lot of knowledge. Um, many, many uh of their team members have done a lot of work in Southern Marin. Um, including members are on the uh Safe Roster School uh Task Force that help out with the yellow bus. And and the bus and the schools all around Reed U- Union School District. Um, we also uh, they have two experts on there that deal with just uh signalization. And uh, the new adaptive type of signal, signalized intersections where they can actually predict uh future patterns. Before it happens and change in real time to allow traffic to move in and out, so it's. And also looking at other forms of transportation where if it's a, a carpooling, um. Uh, sh- share riding, all, you know, share ride, all kinds of stuff out there, multimodal that they're looking at as well as part of this RFP.
So, so I think this is probably out of the scope, uh, but they, I think they're also the team that's working. Um, at the county level on um, the Baywave Executive Committee's exploration of governance of, of. Uh, sea level, addressing sea level rise across the county, I forget what it is called. In their RFP, are they looking at sea level rise impacts on any of our uh transportation assets?
Well, resilience is part of it, so they will be looking at that and, and also to mention that they are working with TAM very closely on about five different intersections. On uh Highway one oh one throughout Marin County, so they do have a lot of close relationships with Caltrans District Four. Um, engineers and chiefs.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Um, so I know council member Welner was on the interview committee, um, did he offer any specific endorsements of this proposal? Just cause I feel like of the members on the interview committee, he's the one with the closest vote to the budget. Um, so I would appreciate anything that he had to say with respect to value and cost and things like that.
C- council member uh Welner did uh review, he was with us when we were um discussing all of the consultants. And as far as the price goes, the, the, the price was submitted, he does understand it's a high price. But um, he does understand that our second lowest was, you know, within twenty percent, but they did not offer as much. Uh, uh, work, and they were, their, their, their project was a lot shorter, they, they anticipated wrapping it up by December. So we knew that the value of this, of what we're getting uh coincides with the type of man hour that they're putting in, giving us a good product, so. He, it was a unanimous decision with the whole selection committee.
Thank you. Any further comments? Or actually, this is questions. Um, alright, I am hearing none. We'll move now to public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? Yes, please, Jerry.
Good evening, council members, um, Jerry Reason, Tiburon resident. And I uh would like to say that I'm uh. Very much involved in this project, only very recently, however. Um, and the reason I wasn't involved any earlier is because my son was one of the respondents. And I wanted to stay away from the process for that reason. But I'm looking at the proposal that, that was submitted and deemed the, the best. I'm concerned that uh, there's a, a lot of studies being proposed that are really obvious in their outcome. And are uh, an overspending on Tiburon's part. It's uh, community outreach uh to say that they want to remove the congestion. At the corner of Tressel Glen is an obvious outcome and is easily the most dramatic traffic issue in Tiburon. Uh, worrying about bell schedules. Um, any rate, I, I would really wish that uh Tiburon would take an approach. Um, not uh because of how this uh selection was chosen, but to have um, an outcome. Or the applicant early on is required to come up with a, a solution that would sho- solve the, the congestion. So uh, an approach that would have a response by the applicant in two months. And then come back to the council and then go from there. And ra- rather than spending s- three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. To study and come up with everything that we know is going to happen, um, it seems very unfortunate. The, the uh RFP, um, I believe should be pulled back. And as I said, go with just a two-month uh response and come back to the council. Uh, my fear is that Tiburon is gonna waste a lot of time and money and repeat uh study of obvious things. And not fix the congestion problem. Uh, and I think that's it for me, thank you.
Any further public comment on this item? Anyone online?
I do have one, I will recognize Chuck Hornbrook.
Hi, good after, good evening. I was the post uh commission member that was uh appointed to this review. Uh, and I had the opportunity to sit in all three proposals, they were all uh. A varying difference of professionalism and thoroughness. I will say that all three of them actually, sir, weirdly, recommended a widening of Tiburon Boulevard before Tressel Glen going outbound on the west side. So clearly, there's an opportunity there, and I think uh. You can ask more questions to David about uh the runoff and other pieces that he mentioned. But it was clear when we did the analysis and looked at the different proposals, there was clearly some, a team that knew exactly what to do. And how to get it done and that we would be happy, I think, to coin one of your members who stated during the meeting. We shouldn't spare any thoughts and go and be creative on this. And the selected entity uh decided that, and and they did a very good job on that, and they were overwhelmingly. The best solution, um, I think that other ones that were there were very uh interesting, and I think they'll do very well doing some other things, but. They had the resources and the people and the expertise to deliver something that we would be proud of, that we could use with Caltrans. One thing that was a big surprise for me going through this, and I think it would be interesting for other people to know this, and maybe David can expand more on this. Is that they will u- Caltrans will use this result. To help make decisions and make, a- address the traffic issues. You need to have the relationships and the wherewithal and the data and the experience to work with Caltrans and make that successful. And uh, the selected entity, uh, the selected company. Uh, the consultants were the best at doing that, and clearly, as David mentioned, they have the experience in doing that. Uh, one of their big projects was on Sir Francis Drake going through uh Green Bray out to um Marin Catholic. And if any of you have driven that over the past six months, it's a vast improvement, and that is something that we need on Tiburon Boulevard. Thanks for your time and the good in your efforts.
Thank you. Is there any further comment online?
Seeing none.
Uh, then I bring it back to council for any discussion, um, a motion to um. Approve the recommendations of the staff and a discussion of appointing a council member to the adv- advisory group.
May I just make one quick comment before, yeah, I'm sorry, I just wanna say I really appreciate what Mr. Reason said, and Mr. Hornbrook, thank you guys for participating. I've been trying to process what you said, um, because cost is. It, cost and action are two things that are, we should always be thinking about, um, and the thing that, that. Why I'm inclined to embrace this and I'm worried about the, the approach that you're suggesting is that, um. It, I don't think it's the right approach to pick an idea and try to go run with it. Um, I think that we need the study and then we need to, like, the public engagement will be when the ideas are in front of us. And the reason I say that, right, is because the way I picture it in the, looking into the future is. Different people in Tiburon are gonna want different things, right? And everyone says we want less traffic, but like, the people in downtown, they just want a freeway out of here, because it's terrible right now. The people in Bel Air, I don't know that they care so much, right? And so, if we are intending to spend a ton of money. With drastic changes to make it happen, there will be parts of Tiburon that don't want that, right? And it will be. That's when the public engagement and the real thinking and evaluation is gonna have to be, so I think that. We want the scope of this work to be broad and all-encompassing, and I, I totally appreciate the fact that like. A lot of what we e- expect to see is probably known, um, but I still think that that argues for. Going broad and and maybe a little bit longer, just to make sure we're covering all the bases. On the plus side, I will say, I'm a member of the board of the um Tiburon Peninsula Traffic Relief JPA. Which is a um ostensibly runs the school bus program, but obviously, as the name suggests, it talks about traffic relief. Um, and I, I promise you that I will go to them and ask for a contribution from them, since they are, their purview is traffic relief. So maybe the Town of Tiburon won't have to pay the full amount, um, if that board feels generous. So, um, otherwise, I, I think, I appreciate the committee that, that did the interviews and the proposals, I, I thank them for participating. Um, but I would support this one.
Thank you, and and I agree with Jack, um, considering the conflicting community input we gave, give about what. The priority problems are and what the possible sol- the priority problems are and what the possible solutions are. I think a broad approach to defining the problem and identifying alternate solutions is really important, and I think the ability to coordinate with Caltrans as soon as possible is crucial. Our paving project was supposed to be finished, I think, this year originally, and because of community input for different solutions, uh it was now deferred for two years. We can't keep rolling that back. I think this is a coordinated approach to it with community input. I support it.
Um, I I don't have a lot to add. I think, I think, again, um having s- solutions, understanding the problem, um, what the problem actually is. I think a lot of us have ideas of what the problem is, but I think understanding and and uncovering the data behind it is going to be really important. And then, and then coming up with actionable solutions are uh are are what I'm most interested in.
So having commented and taken public comment, I will entertain a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
So I would make that motion, and I would move that we uh make it a budget amendment, approve a budget amendment um to the fiscal twenty four-year budget uh in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars to fund the project in fiscal year twenty twenty four. Um, and then um that'll be the extent of the motion, but after that, we should talk about the council member who would be participating.
Uh, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Hi.
So, yeah, you'd like lead that discussion?
Well, um, I was hoping that we could appoint a council member. Um. Um, I know Councilmember Welner helped with the interviews, but we're sitting here. Is there somebody who would like to be on the?
Jack, would you like to be on? Uh, or Mayor?
Our Treasury Authority of Marin expert.
Let me say that that if John Welner is interested, even if you appoint me, I I would step down on that. This was his idea. He's very enthusiastic about it. But 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 let me just say, um, and and run through what I can bring to it as the appointed member. Um, I was on the uh Transportation Public Works Policy Committee at the League of California Cities from two thousand four to two thousand twenty four. I was on the Golden Gate Bridge uh Highway and Transit District Board from two thousand twelve to two thousand uh twenty-two, where I was Vice Chair of the Finance Committee, Chair of the Labor Relations Board, Chair of the Transportation Committee, and Chair of the Retirement uh Trust Board, although that that went back and forth between two of us every other year. I currently serve on the Bay Wave Executive Committee uh from twenty sixteen. Uh, right now, they're looking at uh the impact of sea level rise on transportation assets across uh the region, across all jurisdictions, and how such coordination would be uh governed. Um, this will feed into the countywide transportation plan that TAM uh has under consideration. Um, I served on TAM from two thousand two to present, um where they are considering the countywide transportation plan. And I have also served on the Safe Routes to School, uh sort of informally as the TAM liaison mostly to protect our our crossing guards. Um, and um so I I have a broad perspective, but so do other people. I would appreciate this appointment, but I would also appreciate stepping down if if John or someone else really is passionate about wanting to take it on.
I pre- appreciate your flexibility, but I appreciate qualifications more, and I would make a motion that we appoint you um as a member of the working group.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh, and that was Mayor Fredericks, in case anyone was not watching.
And and is that conditioned on John Welner's interest?
We can discuss later if he expresses interest.
Oh, I don't, I don't think that was part of the motion.
Saving?
That wasn't part of the motion.
I know, that's why I asked. All right, um, so that concludes our action item agenda, and we move now to public hearings. Our first public hearing is the one fourteen Lyford Appeal, and I apologize for this long meeting, but here we are. Um, is there a staff report?
Yes, there is. I'll try to, I'll try to speak really quickly, if I might. So what we have before you tonight is a public hearing to consider two appeals. Uh, the Design Review Board approval, and I will go through each one of them. They're different. Uh, the site plan and architectural review for the remodel deck expansion and additions to a single-family home. And as you see before you right now, is the site and the street at Lyford, and that's that is the home, and this is the project site. So this is an application for, was an application for design review. And as I said before, it is a remodel deck expansion and approximately twenty-two ninety-four square feet addition to an existing home with a variance request to increase the lock coverage. Um, where to nineteen percent, where fifteen is required, and a floor exception um to increase the gross floor area to uh four thousand seven hundred and seventy-four, where four thousand three hundred and eighty-three square feet is required. The application was reviewed by the Design Review Board on four occasions, and on April fourth, the application was conditionally approved, directing the applicant to reduce the height of the section of the roof above the family room, two feet to match the roof section above the primary bedroom. Staff received, as I stated, two appeals related to the approval of this project. One was received by the applicant to request the council reconsider the condition to lower the roof height. That was the only thing they wished to request. And the second appeal was filed by the neighbor who contests the review process and attendance by the Design Review Board. The application, so ma- I'm trying not to be too repetitive, so I'll be quick, but this is two separate appeals um of the action by the Design Review Board. Left, and I'm going to refer to them as appellate number one and appellate number two. And that was based on when they received the application, and when I received the uh appeal applications. So appellate number one is the property owner and applicant, and they submitted an appeal of a condition of approval requiring the reduction of the height of a section of roofing above the family room to match the section of roof by the Design Review Board for the proposed residential project. The town council may wish to evaluate if the reduction in roof height is appropriate and reasonable. Appellate number two is a neighboring property owner, and and he has appealed the decision, or they, because it's it's a couple, has appealed the decision based on the board's procedures regarding board member attendance. The town council may wish to evaluate whether the public hearing and the board's determination was in compliance with due process protections um within chapter sixteen dash sixty-four of the municipal code. So the four uh times in which we heard this project, first was uh December seventh in two thousand twenty-three, and the meeting was continued to a study session to discuss the massing to reduce some of the view impacts. The study session was held on January eighteenth, and the DRB directed the applicant to return to the DRB on March twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. The third DRB meeting was March twenty-first, and the applicant responded by pulling back the rear corner to lessen the impacts to the neighbors for an improvement with the a view. The board requested additional information regarding the massing windows, exterior building, materials, and roof configuration. So the application, the applicant returned on the fourth meeting, April fourth, uh to provide the changes to the windows and made exterior changes to the lower-level terracing. The board approved the application with the condition to lower the family room height by two feet. Timely appeal, appeals were filed on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Appeal number one, or appeal ground number one, which is from appellate number one, the property owner, and this is quote, "The DRB's April fourth, twenty twenty-four approval requiring the project height be lowered by two feet is an extreme measure that was not discussed at two prior public hearings or the study session because the board kept moving the goalpost regarding this project." The staff's response to appellate number one is, "The Design Review Board held three meetings and one study session on this application. In each of the meetings, there were a number of modifications requested, and the applicant has responded accordingly. Though the change to the roof height was not specifically discussed in previous meetings, view impacts and building mass were discussed, and the roof height is related to both views and building massing. Furthermore, even if the change to the roof height was not discussed in previous meetings, the board is not precluded from requiring this condition because the board, under Municipal Code sixteen dash fifty-two point two zero two uh two, zero two zero E, as the review authority to review projects and impose reasonable condition it determines are necessary to make the required findings and ensure the town's principles, guidelines, provisions, and standards can be met." Now, we say there was only one ground for appellate number one. Appellate number two, the first ground of appeal was that the Design Review Board's decision-making was compromised due to board members' attendance over three public hearings and one study session related to the to the project. Board member Chong's attendance at the April fourth, twenty twenty-four meeting, despite his absence on December seventh, January eighteenth, and March twenty-fourth, and board member O'Durcio's absence on April fourth, despite his attendance on the December seventh, January eighteenth, and March twenty-fourth, was improper. Board member O'Durcio should have attended the meeting via Zoom. As discussed above, there were three design review meetings prior to April fourth um me- approving this project. The board members in attendance were as follows: Kim Rosner and O'Durcio were there on December uh seventh. On January eighteenth, Kim Rosner, O'Durcio, and Malat. And then on three twenty-one twenty-four, it was Kim Rosner, O'Durcio, and Malat. And on four four twenty-four, it was Kim Rosner, Malat, and Chong. The Municipal Code outlines the due process requirements for public hearings. Due process for hu- public hearings is safeguarded if adequate notice is given to the proper parties and parties have reasonable opportunity to be heard. Notice was given for the public hearing scheduled on December seventh by placing a notice in the ark and mailing notices to neighbors within three hundred feet. The public hearing on December seventh was continued by the board to the January eighteenth, therefore, no new notice was required. The public hearing on March twenty-first was noticed in the ark on March sixth, and notices were also mailed to property owners with three hundred feet of the subject property. The public hearing on March twenty-first was continued by the board to April fourth, and therefore, no new notice was required. For all meetings, the town properly noticed the public hearings in the newspaper of general circulation and mailed notice to all neighbors within three hundred feet of the subject property. Additionally, over four meetings, both the applicant and the neighbors all had reasonable opportunity to be heard. Furthermore, given the project was heard over four meetings, all interested parties had significant time to review the evidence and offer alternative points of view. The town's due process requirements were met under both state law and the Municipal Code, section sixteen dash sixty-four. Board member attendance, absences of board members do not deter the board from making decisions. The town does not have an attendance policy, and as long as there is a quorum, the public meeting will be held the, and direction and decisions can be made. On December seventh, January eighteenth, March twenty-first, and April fourth, there was a quorum of the Design Review Board, and a public meeting was noticed and held. Where, excuse me, as here, as here, as a public hearing is continued, a board member who is absent during the prior meeting may participate in the decision if that member has familialized themselves with the evidence received during the hearing by reviewing the minutes or recording of the proceeding. To participate, members should note that they have reviewed the record. Board member Chong, while absent on December seventh, January eighteenth, and March twenty-fourth meetings, noted on April fourth on the record that he has read the record, conducted a site visit, and is familiar with discussion over the last several meetings and has the necessary information to discuss and consider the application before the board. The minutes from December seventh, January eighteenth, and March twenty-first were available in the April fourth packet. Finally, as board member O'Durcio absence on uh April fourth, there is no way of knowing how the individual's board member will vote to either support or deny, unless they are present at the meeting and cast a vote. Otherwise, it's solely speculative. The town no longer supports attendance via Zoom for board members. Appeal ground number two by appellate number two. The applicant failed to incorporate key design changes requested by the Design Review Board, particularly regarding glazing on the northern side and tucking the addition into the hillside to reduce its visual impact. Although Camp, Chair Kim highlighted these issues early on, the applicant did not address them, and Chair Kim still voted in favor of the process. This inconsistency, combined with board member Malat's opposition due to noncompliance with the hillside guidelines, raises concern about the Design Review Board's focus on important design principles and its decision-making process. Staff response. The Design Review Board is tasked with reviewing zoning regulations, design standards, and community aesthetics. The board may and does focus on discussing issues and design ideas throughout the entire review process. Incorporation of all ideas or suggestions is weighed against the design as a whole, and in some instances, the board no longer sees the suggestion giant, design changes as necessary. The board has the prerogative to review and approve a design as they see fit. Ultimately, there is a balancing of ideas and an end product of a design that the majority of the board can approve. Throughout the public hearings for this project, the board considered all input input from several meetings, and it is common for board members to have varying perspective and engage in open discussions to ensure a thorough review process. While board members can suggest specific changes to the project's design is ultimately within the board's discretion to approve or deny a project. Moreover, a board member is entitled to change their mind throughout the public hearing process and are not, um, and suggestions to ensure a design complies with the town's regulations and are not converted into requirements unless they are approved as a condition of approval. Ultimately, the board decide, decided the project met the standards for approval, and the final decision reflects the collective judgment of the board, Design Board. Based upon all the reports and the data submitted, supplemented by the public comments and onsite inspections as appropriate, the Design Review Board considered and reviewed this application and found that the project is consistent with the purposes set forth in the zoning ordinance, the criterias of the zoning ordinance regarding the guiding principles, and other relevant provisions of the zoning ordinance. Furthermore, the round board found the project is exempt from the provisions of CEQA. In reaching their conclusions to approve the project, the Design Review Board imposed reasonable conditions as determined necessary in order to make the findings required by the Municipal Code. So now we have it for you, the recommended actions. Staff recommends that the, you hold this public hearing as you're doing currently. Deliberate and consider one of the following options. Deny the appeal, upholding the approval made by the Design Review Board, and direct staff to return with an appropriate resolution for, with all the findings for consideration of adoption at the next meeting. Grant the appeal, denying the application, and direct staff to return with an appropriate resolution for consideration of the adoption at the next meeting. Partially grant the appeal by making revisions or adding conditions to the Design Review Board's approval, and direct staff to return with an appropriate resolution with the appropriate, with all of the findings for consideration of adoption at the next meeting. Alternatively, you can remand the item to the Design Review Board with specific directions regarding any aspect of the project needing further review and deliberation. The board's decision on remand would again be appealable to the council. And with that, I'm open for any questions. I forgot my question slide.
We have no questions? Councilmember Nick Far, I saw your hand go for your mic. No. No questions. Thank you for an extensive report.
Thank you.
All right, um. I think at this time, what I'd like to do is review the appeal procedures, so we all know what we're doing here. Um, the way it's laid out, appellate uh number one, uh, which is the owner, may make a presentation of no more than ten minutes, then respond to council questions, if any. Appellants can divide up the ten minutes between various, among various speakers, but the time devoted to answering questions is not part of the ten minutes. Appellate number two then may make a presentation of no more than ten minutes with the same rules, respond to council questions, divide up ten minutes between um various speakers. Time devoted to answering questions is not part of the ten-minute uh time limit. So we will start with any presentations by appellate number one. So we will start with any presentations by appellate number one.
Hi, I'm Bob Hamadi, the owner of one fourteen Lifeward and just want to start by saying our the summary of our our goal for this uh appeal is to say that in the last minute decision during our fourth design review board meeting, the board reduced our family room ceiling height by two feet in a hurry attempt to come to a consensus decision. We believe that there was a flaw in logic that brought us to this point and would like to have this reversed so that the ceiling height of our proposed family room is reverted back to eleven feet. Now I want to turn to my wife, Nushin, who's the designer of this project and go through the details of the project.
Uh hello, my name is Nushin Oshideri and I'm the owner and designer of one fourteen uh Lifeward. And just wanted to, before I forget, to make a minor correction on Dina's presentation. Our lot coverage is sixteen point four percent, not nineteen percent. There was a miscalculation and that was corrected at the second design review board, so um it has nothing to do with this, but I might forget, okay. So um uh summary of the reasoning is that we added architectural interest based on the below design guidelines, avoiding large roof areas and made it not look like an afterthought or an addition. Uh design guideline one principle three uh indicates that uh break up masses of building and horizontal and vertical elements. Design guideline two principle uh recommends that large roof areas should be broken up. And design guideline two principle ten and suggests that to avoid uh recommends to avoid single form solutions to building envelopes, breaking up massing and casual floorwork in the site within the site. And so we tried by uh different stepping down our uh roof lines to follow up with this guideline guidelines. And then we utilize our existing home and minimize the destruction by keeping eighty four percent of the shell, reusing as much as existing material as possible and add to it. Our um one of our major goals was honor the elements, minimize environmental impact by working with the grading of slope. Over half of our addition is under the building, under the deck tucked into the slope. This floor and uh lower floor addition is not visible from any uh street or neighboring homes. And we tried to keep compatible in scale and be in harmony with the neighbors' new homes and remodels in the vicinity, therefore maintaining the neighborhood's character. Arrived at this conclusion following town of Tiburon zoning, design guidelines, satisfied view corridor issues and implemented design review board suggestions. Uh we totally believe that um what we are proposing here is gonna be a tremendous addition to the neighborhood and uh it will elevate our neighborhood. So to for supporting material, I'm gonna go really fast through what we have gone through for the past seven months. Uh this is the second uh after the study session, this is what we have done. All the yellow areas are what we have set back and lowered the the roof and reduce the width and reduce the deck and all of that um yellow area, you can see the extent of our uh reduction based on the the study session. All those uh I don't have a um lighter, but all of those dotted lines are where the um overhangs are. And that that window up on the uh family room are the windows at stake. And those windows are covered from three ways by three and four feet overhangs. And we are twenty five feet below the uh house uh above. So it's impossible that somebody can see those windows. And there's a lot of uh plantations and hedging uh on that above uh on the north side of this uh wall. And those are the only windows at the north sides. Side. Uh this is the lower floor and we just um pushed back by four feet, dug into the hillside to be even more tucked in and then reduce the uh overhang and the decks and uh basically, that's what we did. And I'm gonna go through this really fast. This is the front elevation that this change has nothing to do. It doesn't affect anything on this elevation and the next one also. And this is the side that we went for feedback and this side is we're looking into just the forty thirty feet thirty forty feet height of a white wall of the next door neighbor at one sixteen. This is the and south elevation and you can see the stepping down uh roof that uh we uh we have been very um uh insistent on because by lowering the middle part to the um master bedroom part, it will make this house look like a motel and it will look like an afterthought and it it would it it feels like it's been mutilated and I don't see any reason behind this reduction. And going from a living room, dining room, kitchen to a nine feet drop uh of ceiling, it's too drastic. Uh this is the back side that nobody sees and um the um as you can see, the the left side is the master bedroom, master bath at nine feet and the middle part is where they are recommending uh to reduce it to that nine feet and it will it will be like really chopping up uh the nose of a building. It's just like very, it's gonna make it really, really uh bad and again, an afterthought, not part of the design uh concept. This is the story pole uh drawing, just to point to this is just to show that where those story poles are, they're at four feet and three feet of overhang, so it doesn't it's not representative of the building, the mass or the volume. And on the north side, you can see most of those, all of those windows are covered by overhang and it's not visible from anywhere. Uh the star is our home and you can see the scale of it and within we are very much within the lot coverage and floor area um variances. The neighborhood is at sixteen point nine to twenty seven and we are at sixteen point four. And this is the, we got the neighbor, all of the neighbors uh signature on approval of supporting this our project. And nineteen out of uh fourteen out of nineteen signed off and they are very in favor of our project. And four didn't uh respond. And uh for the past few months, everybody is questioning us, what's going on and they are very anxious about seeing our project to happen and looking forward to it. And Tom Graham, the old uh mayor of Tiburon walks by our house every day and he was uh wondering what's going on. We have seven friends on uh Lifeward and in the neighborhood and they're very, very uh look looking forward to seeing this project to happen. This is the original design and it's uh it's been take this picture has been taken from the base of the window looking out to our home. And uh as you can see, all of their major views have been protected.
Excuse me, Nushin, there there are about four seconds. Can you wrap up?
Okay, uh can we go to the next one, please? This is what we have done after the review because you can see from the same point of view, the church, the downtown Tiburon and the club. And the next one, again, uh this is from another point of the uh living room, dining room, you can see the whole uh we have opened up the whole views for the neighbor. And and then that's our the scale of our home in the whole hillside, you could see uh it's like a dot and then the next one uh again, one sixteen and that's our house and then the the house below at one oh eight. That's this, the scale of the brand new house on that hillside. And we basically would like to have the opportunity to upgrade this old, old house and make it livable and functional for our family and take I I have the same opportunity that everybody else has on that hillside.
Uh thank you. But would you, this is a question. Can you focus actually on the subject of the appeal? And and uh what is the problem uh with the two foot drop? Is it aesthetic or is it functional?
Yes, it's static. I mean, it's static because but according to the design guidelines, they don't wanna have a big mass of roofing. So I broke it up and had a system and an organization to this whole concept. And then making it all at one level at nine feet, it will look like a two two L-shaped things attached to each other and afterthought and a remodel, which I've been trying to avoid. I wanna make this as a big, one big, one um home rather than a remodel and an addition. And then the same second thing is that the nine feet versus the eleven feet, it doesn't, that two feet has no effect on anybody. As if you drop that two feet from the house above, they're gonna probably see the wall of the living room or dining room. It just doesn't make any sense whatsoever to drop that. And then the from going from the living room, dining room into the family room where three and a half feet drop. It's just kind of a really, really uh and not functional.
So so the two foot uh drop at one point, um were it not there would actually give you better views out the window from the adjoining room?
It's just the transition from living room to the family room, from the dining room and living room and kitchen to the family room. It's gonna be like three and a half feet uh header in your face. There's there's a like and then from the outside when you're on the deck, when you look at this building, it's gonna be at two different flat roofs. One at the living room, dining room, and then the master bedroom and master bath and family room. It's just gonna be one continuous roof rather than breaking it off.
And and what you want is it to be all at eleven feet?
No, just that full, just that just that portion. If you could go back to that elevation, please. Uh the the this one, the other one, that one, the middle part. They're suggesting to drop that to the to the right side elevation. And we would want to keep it at that elevation to get to break it up.
So you would actually have three different levels there like steps is what you're asking for?
Yes, yes, because and design guidelines recommends breaking up the roof lines and the spaces and the ceiling heights.
Thank you.
Yeah, can I ask one question? So um so I appreciate what you say about the geometry in terms of the not necessarily affecting the view from above. Um and I know you said that there are overhangs to to help mitigate the glare, but nonetheless, um if we were to reinstate the eleven foot level, that would essentially increase the glass surface area by two feet by whatever the width is.
Yes.
Um would you be willing to reduce the width of the glass?
Yes.
So that the effective square footage of the glass is the same as it is now.
Yes, yes, I can remove that glass uh at the at the at the master bedroom and it will be the same equal square footage of re of keeping it at eleven feet.
Thanks.
Any further questions? No, I I have a question for staff. Are we gonna jump back and forth uh between appellate one and two or can we now go to the rebuttal for appellate?
We're gonna, the next step is for appellate two to give their ten minute presentation and then do public comment and then appellate one will come back with a three minute rebuttal and appellate two will then come back with a three minute rebuttal.
All right, um I I just found a little confusing to jump from the issues we're discussing here. It seems more rational to go to the rebuttal to these particular sets.
Well, they're gonna tie in together because then they have to have open public comment both times. So we're trying to create order out of chaos.
All right, um so thank you very much. Um now we will hear from appellate number two.
Yeah, I'm only gonna put one slide up.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and uh um members of the council. My name is Len Rifkind, Rifkind Law and Mediation PC. I represent the owners of one sixteen one sixteen uh Life Drive. That's um Christian soul and uh Rin uh uh Peshak. So um can we uh Leah, just keep going and I'll tell you when to stop. Go back, go back, go back. There, no, one more back. Keep going. That one, just leave that one up. So uh the slide that you're seeing is um what we think is going to be what the house would look like from the vantage point of the living room and dining room of one sixteen Lifeard. Might as well see what we're talking about here. Briefly, you saw two issues on appeal. We're not appealing tonight. You don't have to worry about the issue of the uh the member who was present for the DRB and all of that. That's that's not an issue. So we're only gonna be focusing on four issues. Uh number one, too much massing, view impacts to St. Hillary's, the the church downtown and the Corinthian Yacht Club, excessive glazing and not complying with the hillside guidelines. Those are our four issues. The only takeaway about what I do want the council to understand is typically if you think you had four DRB meetings, three and one study session, you'd think, well, they've killed this and they've thought about it and and please understand that it was a divided DRB, two count uh board members consistently were against the project uh Malat and and O'Dorseo. So it was it's this was a close call by the by the DRB. Now focused on the four issues that I cited. Um I don't think this council can make the findings that are required under the uh under your municipal code, namely the um uh for design review and then for the Floria exception and the variance. I'll just talk about the Floria exception and design review. So let's focus on that. Because that's what this is about. Either you can make the findings or you can't. So under six, section sixteen fifty two point oh two oh H, that's your guiding principles that you all are, I'm sure, very familiar with. It says that uh when you review applications, the review authority, that's you, shall determine whether or not the project meets the applicable uh requirements. So you have a mandatory authority to determine whether or not you've made the findings. What findings can't you make? Under sixteen fifty two oh two H, numbers one, two, three, four, six. three, four, six, seven, and eight. One, two, three, four, six, seven, and eight. I'm gonna briefly review each of those points, why I think you can't make the findings for each of those ones. Number one, a site plan adequacy. Is there proper relation of the project to its site? That's what design review is all about. You have an old existing home. If you look at the design review guidelines, Mr. Malat, who wrote them some 45, 44 years ago, said, hey, what you've done here is you have this existing older home and you've effectively doubled it in size, all effectively the same plane. And so I don't think there's a proper relation to the site. The design guidelines that we'll go into in a minute suggest you step it up the hill. You do lots of different things that are in those design guidelines. Number two, site layout in relation to adjoining sites. So as you can see here, what's being affected is the foreground view. Now, I happen to be a person of somewhat shorter stature than Mr. Ryan, for example. So when I go to a movie theater and someone's head is in front of me, I can see the whole movie screen pretty much, but I'm focused on that person's head in front of me because it's very distracting. That is the same thing as what you have here. You have a very large mass that now is in the foreground that blocks pretty key things that you want to see, things like St. Hillary's Church, things like downtown, things like the Corinthian Yacht Club. So there is not a good layout in relation between the project and the adjoining site. Number three, neighborhood character. There has to be a good relationship of the building to its surroundings is important. What we have here is a house that's cited at the highest point of the lot as opposed to, how would you, how else would you do it? You would sink it down into the lot. You would, you would move it in different places. Now, you'll hear from the applicant, oh, that's cost too much money. The issue is design, not money. That is the, that is the issue. Number four, floor area ratio. You've heard that, you know, this exceeds floor area ratio by, you know, it's a 4,300 square foot limit and it's 4,700 or 4,800 they're coming in at. And they need a variance and they need a Floria exception. So by definition, this is too much program for this site. Number six, compatibility of architectural style. And what the problem here with the design is, you saw in the north facade that she showed you, there's a lot of glazing facing north. The applicant claims that the overhang blocks it and they're 25 feet lower. Design review, the design review board felt that was a problem because they asked them to lower the glazing on the north elevation facing. So clearly, some people think that glazing is gonna be visible. It would be even less if you lowered the building more, you moved it down the hill. Number eight, lighting. Under proposed lighting, should not invade the privacy of other properties, produce glare or light pollution. If you have too much glazing, you're gonna get light pollution. On the FAR, I think I've already covered that because we've talked about size. You need to make a finding under 1652.020I. So I'm talking about H, I, and J. I is the floor area ratio. And FAR, by the way, is a maximum. And that, and you don't automatically, as a matter of right, get to go to the maximum, but that's what it's supposed to be. And then there has to be something super special if you're gonna be able to exceed it. Here, we have an older home that all that's being done is you're just doubling the size of it by adding its twin, so to speak, to the east, filling the whole space there. Now, let's talk about the design guidelines that I'd like to finish. I see I have three minutes left and we'll try to cover that. The design guidelines is 1652.02OJ, as in Jack. In reviewing applications for discretionary review, the review authority, you, the council, shall, shall, mandatory, apply the goals and principles of the Hillside Design Guidelines. They're not, they are mandatory that you consider them. And I want to say to this council, if you approve this project the way it is, you are sending a message to all future applications that design guidelines are not mandatory, that they are discretionary or people are gonna choose which ones to apply and which ones not. I would suggest on the design guidelines, goal number one is the, which says reduce bulk, is the biggest problem here. This is Exhibit A, that slide that's up there. Too large. How do you reduce that? What does Malat say some 44 years ago? Cut it into the hillside to reduce the effect of bulk. That didn't happen. This is all up in the air. Principle two. Terrace up slope. Principles four and five, follow hillside contours. Principle eight, use changes in material to soften elevations. I see a lot of glazing and stucco. Principle 10, avoid single form solution. While you saw slight elevation changes, changes that you, that the applicant was talking about, it's effectively a double box, is what we got here. Goal number three of the design guidelines, preserve access to views. That doesn't mean you get 100% of your view. There's no question that 116 Life or has a tremendous, dramatic, wonderful view. There's, if you had the opportunity to go stand there, it is really, it is really good. There is a better way to design this project that wouldn't take up this whole foreground that you see. So one of the principle number one under goal three is do not locate the dwelling on the highest point of the property. That is exactly what has occurred here. Principle three, view should be preserved as much as possible within reason. So I'm asking this council, actually, what am I asking you to do? I think that you're not architectural experts with the time to be able to do this and design from the dais tonight. I think the best thing to do is to remand to the DRB with directions and tell them to implement the design guidelines as they see fit as much as possible. I think that's an appropriate result. Principle seven, partial view blockages should be avoided. View protection is more important in the primary rooms. That's exactly the rooms that are being blocked here, living room and dining room. Avoid horizontal view where the foreground is a very sensitive part of the view. That's exactly what's happened here is horizontal view blockage. And so, and lastly, don't block well-known landmarks like St. Hillary's and Corinthian Yacht Club. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
I know that was scintillating, but there has to be a question.
Okay. We have no questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Where am I? We move now to any public comment on the presentation. This would be someone in the public, not involved in the project. I'm seeing none. Is there anyone online? Public, member of the public, not a party to the appeal?
To the neighbor.
Please.
Okay, hi, my name is Cindy Kao. I'm at the 118 Life or Drive. So it's on the, you know, the back of the, on the back to the house. So we can see the 114, the front. So before, you know, my husband signed you know, the paper. At the time, I was not home. So I was not, I did not know that until the post was put up. So we felt it's too big and too high. So that's why we oppose this proposal, too big and too high. So we hope we can reduce, you know, lower and lower down. So that's, you know, what I want to say. Okay?
Thank you. Okay. Is there any further public comment?
Seeing none.
Seeing none. We move now to the next part of this appeal process. Appellant number one has a three-minute rebuttal.
First comment is that the picture that they were showing here is not a correct picture. The pictures that she had showed that the revisions that we made to the design and it showed Santillary, it showed downtown Tiburon, and it showed the yacht club. So these picture boxes are misleading because they're, they're showing outside of the trees that are on the property. And so please go back to the pictures that we had. They represent the actual visual from their living room that you.
And those pictures were taken by Sam at five feet three from the living room, dining room window. They weren't taken by us.
Nothing else? I mean, I didn't have anything else. I just wanted to mention about the, you know, we, we've had all these design review board meetings and, you know, we've taken into consideration all of the, you know, their recommendations and the fact that they're referring to different board members not being present at different, you know, meetings. Actually, one of them was Brian, who had, in the last meeting, he came and he had studied every, you know, meeting and tapes and all of that. And he was the one who's, you know, came with good conclusions and after figuring out, you know, after seeing that what he came up with, we found out that really his absence was, you know, totally to our disadvantage. It wasn't, you know, working to our advantage that he wasn't in the three previous meetings. And the other thing is, you know, we were, we, you know, our dear neighbors here, they wanted to add a fence, you know, when we first met. Without any question, we signed off on that fence addition while some of our friends on the same Life or hill right now are going through a six-month fight with their neighbors to sign off the fence. And it was really a, you know, it was a bad turn of events when, you know, they acquired the 120 Life or as their rental property and then all of a sudden, our relationship turned on a wrong direction. So just, we wanted to stay on a friendly basis, you know, and for a while, they were using our property for about two years for their staging of construction activities and, you know, storing material and we didn't, you know, say, complain or anything, although it was a lot of liability on us. We thought, you know, we're gonna stay on a neighborly basis and have a good relationship and harmony. So we're sorry to see that this is coming to this situation here. And back to the design review guidelines. Mr. Malat, at the last point, the person who's written all these guidelines, his only point was change the color of the property. He wanted to add stone to the base of the property, which we added. They wanted to change the side of the, you know, on the Life or side. We changed everything back to the way they wanted it. And with all due respect, the 118 neighbor that just came in, they do not see our property at all. They only see it when they drive by it from their property to Life or. Board member Rosner from the GetGo was positive about this and he commented on nip and tuck and we applied the nip and tuck. So.
So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, now it's time for appellate number two's three-minute rebuttal and a few seconds more, I guess.
I'm gonna spare you. We're gonna do this in 30 seconds. It's late. Well, I only have two points, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Number one, we were talking about pictures and the slide that we put up and all of that. So pictures that were put up by the applicant, I am told, I, I don't know because I didn't see them take the pictures, but the vantage point that I'm told by my clients that own it, they were taking it from the far east side of the living room, not by the kitchen, middle of the living room, but if you walk to the far side to the east. So that would give a perspective that you might see less of the house at that far corner. So like everything, the vantage point of where the picture's taken is important. So just take that into account. Number two, the reason why DRB wanted the roof lowered is because quite obviously, they wanted to reduce the mass. I mean, that's the reasoning behind it. Thank you. And that was 53 seconds.
All right. We bring it back now to the council for discussion and I think someone indicated they had another staff question. Is that right?
I do, yes. And Mr. Stock, this might be for you. Can you help me out with respect to something Mr. Rifkin said? He said that we're required to make findings and then a lot of what he was talking about was fairly different from what the appeal said they were gonna be appealing. Can you help me out here? Because I'm just a little feeling behind a eight ball a little bit on this one.
So yes, on the findings issue, whatever council directs staff to do, we'll be bringing a resolution forward to at your next meeting on consent, how we normally approve these projects or deal with these appeals, making the requisite findings similar to what DRB did below. So the findings will be for you once we have a resolution, knowing what we should be drafting. And you can look at those findings and determine whether or not you feel comfortable approving that resolution. In regard to your second question, that is correct. There's a lot of argument made tonight by Mr. Rifkin that's not in the notice of appeal. And as our code is clear and a resolution, I believe it's 10-2021 is clear that the council does not need to address grounds introduced at a later time that are not raised in the notice of appeal form. So there are two grounds for appeal by the appellants. And Mr. Rifkind, Rifkind was clear that they were conceding the first ground. And the second ground, I would say, there's, you know, some elements that he touched upon that deal with the second, but not, he was talking about floor area ratio, he was talking about all sorts of different findings we have to make that weren't made or that need to be made and can't be made that were not in his notice of appeal. Council can still just decide it, but that we're not required to.
Any further questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So Mr. Rifkin or Mr. Soul or Ms. Pressick, did you use Mr. Hamadi and Ms. Oshidari's property for staging on your, during your home construction?
We had extensive water damage to our house and except water damage, where there was a time where there was something on right at the property line.
Well, yes. You're not sure?
Yeah. I never heard, I never heard. I never heard anything from Nushin or Bob about it. But is it possible? Sure.
Okay.
They never, they never told us about it. If they told us it was an issue, it would obviously.
All right, if nobody's wrapped it up, I just have one question. So, so just to clarify once again, we're not considering the procedural objections of the attendance by the various council members and what was discussed at any particular meeting. Is that right?
It's my understanding that Mr. Rifkin has waived that as part of his presentation tonight.
Thank you, because I had some beautiful notes on procedure, but I'll be glad to email them to you. Let me just say that the one, there are two remaining issues across the two appellants. One is the functionality of, of the roof elevation. And I don't have the right vocabulary and the impacts on the livability of the house. I am, I am not really convinced that that extra two feet really makes a difference in, in the massing, which it was, I understand it was supposed to address. But not being the expert, I'm inclined to defer to the DRB on, on that particular matter. As for the success of, of protecting the view, that's a hard one, too. That was something I would feel more comfortable. Had appellate number two invited me to see it from their point of view, but from the record alone, it's always a hard call to make which part of your living spaces is entitled to which part of the view, especially when there's an expansive view. And I think that qualification of exactly where you have to stand to see. to see things well in order to remediate any view blockage. It is a difficult one also to resolve, and there I'm comfortable with the DRB's decision also.
So I, um, I generally like to defer to the DRB just because they're the experts and I'm not. And with respect to the view blockage, um, you know, I, I think they deliberated it extensively. And I think that the, that the applicant removed the bulk and the, you know, we had the town representative went and took the photo. And it seemed like they preserved the landmarks. And I, and I know that at the April meeting, it was one of you, um, said, you know, you, you thanked the DRB and you said that the, um, the, the role of the DRB is to say no. And, and I really actually disagree with that. I think that the role of the DRB is to say, yes, but. And that DRB should help our residents get projects approved. And, and around the edges where there is gray area and where it affects neighbors in the town, they should, they should intervene and negotiate. And with respect to the appeal filed by the applicants, you know, I don't think it makes a huge difference to the neighbors, the roof height. I think it is consistent with that goal one, principle three, which is reduce mass with the breaks in the roof. I think it's consistent with goal two, principle ten, which is avoid single form solutions. And that, so their proposal with the eleven-foot ceilings is actually better and more consistent with our hillside design guidelines. I thought that the DRB, you know, again, this is my thinking on what their role is. They, they should help applicants get projects approved that the applicants want. And if, to the extent that it doesn't harm neighbors of the town, that should be the way they operate. And in this case, I feel like they just kind of dropped the ball. And, um, and I would, I would uphold the appeal of applicant one. This is, I know you said differently, but that's my opinion. With, with the condition that they reduce the, they maintain the square footage of the glass based on the nine-foot ceilings. So whatever the square footage calculation has to be, that's what I would say. I think they're fine. And, and I, and I would deny the appeal as it was presented to us, um, in the notice of appeals of applicant two. I, I understand they're frustrated. I just don't think it rises to the, to the level of, of justifying granting the appeal. So we've got two, uh, we've got two, uh, appeals here. The, the first, uh, first appeal, I, I think I tend to agree with, uh, council member Ryan. However, um, I think it's, it, I think it serves all of us to, um, let the experts on the DRB, um, do what they do. But I, I think I'm, I'm, uh, I'm open to council member Ryan's solution. For, uh, appeal number two, you know, that's, that, that one's a little more tricky, I think, uh, um, you know, discussing board members from the DRB not, or being absent, that sort of thing. I, I, I don't really know how to evaluate that or, or.
We don't have to.
All right. So. Done with my comments. Oh, how make a motion to? So if I make, if I put a condition on appeal number one, do I have to partially grant it? Or can I approve it with a condition, or can I move to approve it with a condition? The latter.
So I have a question about his motion to, is that okay? And does that mean it has to go back to the DRB?
If it's not in his motion, no. What we normally do is assuming you want to move this project forward to completion.
Yeah.
Is it, direct us to bring back a resolution with the conditions that you're about to articulate?
Yeah, so my motion would be to, um, uphold the appeal of app, of applicant one with the condition that they maintain the square footage of the glass as what it is now on the approved nine-foot height. And return with a resolution with those conditions.
And on appeal two?
Do, we have to do everything in the same motion?
Yes, I mean, it'd be preferable to have one motion, direct us to bring one resolution back.
And I, and I would deny, and I would move that we deny appeal two.
I'd second that. All right, does it, you need a roll call vote? All in favor? Aye. Right, thank you, folks. Let me roll forward here. We move now to public hearing number two. Cypress Hollow Landscape and Lighting District. This is a public hearing to adopt the resolution confirming assessments and ordering the levying and collection of them within the district for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
Before we, we go into that item, um, do we have anyone on the Zoom call? Besides Francisco?
No.
Okay. And, uh, we also do not have anyone in, in public attendance currently.
We don't have anyone, what?
There, well, there is, there's no one here and there's also no one on the Zoom call. I just wanted to understand.
I see, I was just.
Had an audience or not? If, if there was any public.
No, 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 um, but we're waiting for a staff report now.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, and we're ready to go.
All right, this evening. Town staff is recommending town council to conduct a public hearing regarding the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five assessment of the Cypress Hollow Landscape Lighting District and also adopt a resolution confirming the assessments and ordering a levying collection. Cypress Hollow is right in this area here. It is in the northwest quadrant of the peninsula here on, in Tiburon. The red outline here, um, shows the, uh, the boundary of the landscape district. And the yellow highlights are the areas that the landscape and lighting district maintains within the, uh, district. Uh, this district was established in nineteen ninety by the County of Marin. And, uh, conditions, the development of, uh, conditioned the developments of, of forty-four parcels there. The town annexed and assumed the landscape lighting district administration in nineteen ninety-eight when it was annexed. And funding, uh, from that, uh, district is for landscape and irrigation on the east boundary corridor, the entry landscape, landscaping irrigation on the southwest boundary of the corridor and the park itself. There's a three-step process involved with this. We've got the order of the annual engineers' report, uh, where we have the annual cost diagram and circulation that comes to town council as a consent item. Then we set a public hearing where the, uh, town council approves the engineers' report. And then we're here this evening to conduct a public hearing to confirm the assessments or levy and assessments and transmit the assessments to the county assessor's office. The assessment is unchanged, has not changed from the previous years, uh, from, uh, three hundred seventy-eight dollars per parcel per year. Diagram is unchanged. Uh, here we have some, uh, costs that we're showing you, uh, for this upcoming fiscal year. Fourteen thousand dollars for cost recovery, that's what we use if we hire out, um, contracted, uh, contractors out there to help perform, uh, help the town perform services in the park. Uh, supplies and materials, five thousand, water, three thousand, tree maintenance, fifteen. Total cost for the, uh, landscape lighting district a year is thirty-seven thousand. Right here, we have the estimated beginning fund balance of, uh, thirty-five thousand, July first, twenty twenty-four. And this, I wanted, uh, let town council know, last year, town council, uh, provided a, a contribution of thirty thousand dollars to this fund to keep us afloat. So that thirty thousand plus five thousand left over from that, we're at thirty-five thousand. This is again estimated. Our revenues, uh, from three hundred seventy-eight dollars per parcel, we're gonna receive about sixteen, we're gonna receive sixteen thousand, six hundred thirty-seven dollars. If we, uh, subtract, uh, our cost annual maintenance, no contribution. We're estimating that the, uh, ending fund balance will be fourteen thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars. And this should be twenty twenty-five for next year. So again, our recommended, recommended actions for town council this evening is to conduct a public hearing regarding the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five assessments and adopt a resolution confirming the assessments and ordering levy and collection. And with that said, I'm open for any questions.
Any questions from the council?
Do, do we have, do we not raise the dues every year because of the charter? Or is it, is it tradition or like, what, what's the deal there?
We just have not raised them. It's, it's considered, it's a public park. And anybody can use it. And we've heard a lot of comments from the, from the folks that live in that assess, in that, uh, uh, landscape lighting district that, you know, you know, if it's a, if it's a public park, why are we even contributing to this? And, um, I do remember last year, uh, council member Welner did say, well, why are we having it? Is this something we can discuss? Why aren't we raising it, raising the fees and, and raising the fees? Then, you know, the, the, the folks that live in the neighborhood said, well, then we want a lot more say-so if we raise it. For, if we are contributing a lot of money for this park, then why is it a public park open for everybody? So it's in a weird little situation where we've just haven't raised the fees and they're subsidizing, uh, you know, maybe a third of the cost to maintain it.
Thank you.
So, so, and how did that come about? Was it part of the subdivision map approval or?
Correct.
It was part of the sub, and that's not unusual, it's my understanding.
No, it isn't. A, a lot of subdivisions throughout California, that is one way for towns and, and cities to help maintain the facilities within the subdivision. And a lot of those landscape lighting districts in some of these other areas are a lot more in, in the thousands. And there's still public, public facilities that anybody can use. But we have just historically have not increased it and, and we haven't really had received any complaints except for some maintenance here, grass and, and, and the, you know, the, the bigger complaint we had was the, uh, the portable toilet that we had out there that we removed. And, and so far, everything's been good, no issues. Uh, the park's master plan is reviewing that park as well. And hopefully they can make some recommendations here in the next three, four months. And basically the residents just like it the way it is. Playground the way it is, the grass the way it is, well, the way it used to be, they want it back. Um, but, uh, no changes. Uh, we did send out mailers to the, you know, all forty-four parcels that we were gonna have this hearing, have not heard from any. So it's, it's just a process that we have to go through every year for assessment.
Thank you. Did you wanna make a comment?
Yeah, um, so, so a couple, couple of questions. How does the cost of that park compare to Tether Park or Zelinski Park on an annual basis? And the reason I ask is, now that I'm questioning the estimates, but three thousand dollars a month, it sounds like a lot to mow and, and do tree trimming and that sort of thing for, for, for the park. Is that, how does that compare?
That, that's for the whole year, the thirty-seven, yeah, for the whole year. Our water fees are really high out there and our tree maintenance. And this is not just for the park, it's for the drainage ditch behind the homes on Rancho, the entrance on both sides. So we do have a lot of tree work maintenance and the majority of it does go for trees.
Okay, um, and then, and, and it, and also a large chunk of it is for watering the park.
Correct.
Okay, do you know, do you know offhand what? Because it's, it's about twenty-eight hundred dollars a month total cost for the, for the park, thirty-five thousand dollars a year. About what percentage do you think is just paying for water that goes on the plants?
I do know the last water bill that we did receive from them that I looked at was the March bill. And I believe that one was five hundred sixteen dollars.
Okay.
Very close to, it was a little over five hundred.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, um, do we have any public comment online?
Seeing none.
Uh, so I'll bring it back, um, for a discussion and a motion.
Um, I would like to move that we adopt the resolution confirming the assessments and ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the landscape and lighting district in the Cypress Hollow subdivision for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Yes.
Yes. Uh, we move now to town council reports, any of my colleagues?
Uh, very briefly, RBRAs dues are going up three percent this year.
And very briefly, just to recap, um, I think, uh, we're in agreement that we'd like to see a resolution about, uh, the sixtieth anniversary of incorporation. Uh, that action to incorporate actually occurred at a town council meeting, June twenty-third, nineteen sixty-four. And hopefully, unless somebody has a better idea, we'll just call it the Tiburon celebrates weekend. Town manager report?
Uh, just very briefly, Madam Mayor, um, we now have a quorum of the council that has responded to the doodle poll to, um, schedule a CIP review, um, and it just happens to be the three council members who are sitting here. If, uh, I'm gonna make another attempt, uh, to get everybody a chance to participate, but it's looking like the best day would be Tuesday, May twenty-eighth. I believe it was nine to twelve in the morning, so, um, so we'll confirm that hopefully, uh, by the end of the week.
That's great. I, I really appreciate my colleagues who answered because all of us have other things to do. And then we end up with these overlapping doodle polls so that you, you know, you have to refresh your, your answers to the lagging ones. That it?
That is it.
We are adjourned, folks, unless someone would like to object.